Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Meeting of Tuesday, November 15, 2022. Now, we have a special treat tonight. Join me in standing for the National Anthem. Tonight, we have Mrs. McVeigh’s students here from Sonora Elementary School. Then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Singing) The woods we watched were so gatheringly streaming, and the rocket’s red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave over the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We would like to say the preamble and the Constitution to you.
(Clerk speaking in the background.)
One, two, three. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, insurred on mistranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do our Jane and establish this Constitution from the United States of America. Thank you so much for inviting us.
All right, wonderful. One more time for Mrs. McVeigh’s students from Sonora Elementary. That was really great. Okay, so now we’re going to have our Moment of Solemn Expression, led by our own Reverend John Beegan. Reverend Beegan, you have the floor.
Thank you. Will you bow with me? Father, we just want to thank you for this day, for your love and grace, and especially your patience with each and every one of us. Father, we seek your favor and blessing upon the city of Costa Mesa. We ask that you watch over our leaders, the mayor, our city council members, our city manager, Nate, as he leads our homeless initiative, that they will be a people that lead with love and grace and wisdom. I pray that we, as a city, be united together, even amidst of our differences. May we love our neighbors and serve our neighbors, and especially pray for those experiencing homelessness as they come from a place of brokenness, of hurt and pain. Heal and restore their hearts, help them to see a new way to see life and a new lens as which it will clear their hearts, to see beauty and love. Be with the city leaders and give them wisdom into how they breathe love and truth into those that are on our streets. Be with the outreach team and our partners, who try to help navigate those on the streets to a new hope, and a real hope. I thank you for those who have been housed and ended their homelessness, who now have hope and who can now see more clearly and breathe more easily and move in a positive direction. Be with us tonight, with the decisions, and bless our city. It is in Christ’s name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. So we have four presentations tonight. The first is a proclamation...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I’m sorry. We got to do the roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Thank you.
We’re all here.
Let the record deflect that all council is present.
City, I’m sorry. And you have a report from closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I first wanted to correct, when we started the closed session, I believe that I got the last name wrong. I think I said Silva de Gomez, and it was Gomez de Silva.
Okay.
And then there was another claim that we also discussed in closed session, which was one of the items, which was Alexander Gonzalez’s claim. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Now we have four presentations. Okay, four presentations. The first one is for the 2022 Movember. In November, leaves fall and mustaches grow. It’s that time of year when men grow out their mustaches and beards for a cause. Movember is a month-long campaign designed to raise awareness for men’s health, such as prostate cancer, testicular cancer, mental health, and suicide prevention. This annual event focuses on reducing the number of preventable deaths by raising awareness and funds to deliver innovative breakthrough research and support programs that enable men to live happier, healthier, and longer lives. Joining us today is Movember Community Development Coordinator, Keon Hielat. Mr. Hielat, will you please come to the podium? And then we’re going to, I’m going to read from the proclamation, and then maybe you could say a few words, and then we’ll take a photograph. Movember started in Australia in 2003 and has become a global movement with over six million Mov bros as part of the initiative today. Men’s health is in crisis, and they are dying on an average of five years earlier than women. One in four adults in the United States experience mental health problems in a given year, and 87 men in the United States die by suicide every day. Yikes, that’s a chilling statistic. The city of Costa Mesa encourages its residents to talk about their mental health and commit to a stigma-free culture. I urge all Costa Mesa residents to join the movement to change the face of men’s health. Mr. Hielat, you have the floor.
Thank you so much for having us today. Exactly what we’re doing at Movember is reflected by this moment right here, of sharing the information, of presenting the facts that are going on. We are dying at an alarming rate as males, and we need a reminder. We need guys coming together. We need women in our lives pushing us to better ourselves, to take care of not only our physical health, but also our mental health. What Movember is trying to do through our initiatives, through doing things like funding biomedical research, to hosting community initiative, getting guys together to help build a sense of community and camaraderie, is truly saving lives. We’re really hoping to break that gap of that five-year death discrimination, or distance that we have between women, to truly make a difference. And Movember is extremely excited for this campaign this year. I believe we’re going to raise roughly over $19 million. That’s going to go fund over 1,250 different global projects. And once again, thank you so much for having me here today.
Thank you. Okay, so the next proclamation is for 2022 Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. Each week, sorry, each year, the week before Thanksgiving is National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, to help draw attention to the issues facing this vulnerable population in the nation. This week-long initiative aims to raise awareness of the resources available and to encourage Costa Mesa residents to get involved in community initiatives that help end hunger and homelessness. For 36 years, the Someone Cares Soup Kitchen has served over 300 guests per day, seven days a week, delivered 400 meals a week for residents in need, and serve an average of 300,000 meals per year. In addition, the Soup Kitchen offers a farmer’s market once every fourth Saturday of each month, and free tutoring services for young children. Someone Cares Soup Kitchen believes that no one should go to bed hungry, on the street, or otherwise. The Soup Kitchen provides nutritional and tasteful meals to the most vulnerable individuals and families in our community. The mission is simple: to deliver a well-balanced meal to the homeless, the unemployed, the working poor, the mentally challenged, the physically challenged, the senior citizens, and most important of all, the children. Joining us tonight is actually a great entourage from Someone Cares Soup Kitchen. We’re very, very happy to have you. And you’re led by the Soup Kitchen’s Executive Director, Shannon Santos. And before we call Director Santos, Executive Director Santos up to say a few words, and then we’re going to have the picture like we did before, I want to read from the proclamation. The proclamation reads in part: “Hunger, food, nutritional insecurity, and poverty are issues of vital concern in California, where over 4 million people face hunger, and one in every eight children does not know where their next meal will come from. In Costa Mesa, there are many nonprofit and faith-based organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness, including Someone Cares Soup Kitchen, Families Forward, Trellis, Bracken’s Kitchen, Mercy House, The Lighthouse Church, CityNet, Spin, Share Ourselves, Project Hope Alliance, and United to End Homelessness,” just to name a few. “The city of Costa Mesa has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to its most vulnerable residents by addressing quality-of-life issues and collaborating with community partners to ensure that all who seek help are met with compassion and comprehensive supportive services. I encourage all Costa Mesa residents to join us in ending hunger and homelessness by participating and supporting all the local organization’s efforts to prevent hunger among individuals and families, thereby strengthening the community in which we live.” Now, Executive Director Shannon Santos, you have the floor, if you’d like to say a few words, and then we’ll take our photograph.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens, Mayor Protem Mar, and honorable city council members. My name is Shannon Santelson. I’m the Executive Director of Someone Cares Soup Kitchen. I am thrilled to be here tonight to accept the 2022 Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Proclamation. What an honor, to be recognized for our work, serving in this city with such great leadership. This is especially true of the incredible work of the folks that, as you say, our entourage, that are here with us tonight. As you may know, the Soup Kitchen has been serving the city of Costa Mesa for 36 years, serving many, many folks that would otherwise go hungry at night. A couple of our most recent endeavors are the Neighborhood Family Food Distribution Program and our Farmer’s Market and Community Fair, which have done incredible, incredible work for our communities most needy, and sometimes not so much, you know, not so needy. It’s for anyone who wants to be part of something, you know, sometimes bigger and better than themselves. So we’re fortunate to be able to offer these programs. I share this award with an absolutely incredible team that are here tonight, and I just, I want to thank them, because without them, we truly, truly wouldn’t be able to do what we do. Their tireless work is an absolute incredible, there’s nothing too big, too small, for what they’re able and willing to do. So we, tonight, we have our dedicated staff, which go, I mean, I’m just constantly inspired by the work that they do. They go above and beyond, from our board members, our volunteers, our community leaders, and our program recipients are here this evening. They inspire me to continue to do the work that we do. On behalf of Team Soup Kitchen, thank you for the honorable proclamation and recognition tonight. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. It really, truly does mean a lot to us. Thank you.
All right. So now we’ll take our photo, and people that are in the staff, feel free to get in the photo. It can be, a lot of people can get in the photo. Tony’s good that way. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, hey buddy? How you doing? All right. Thank you very much. We’ll see you all. Have a great Thanksgiving. All right. If you think the crowd is thinning now, wait till the end of the meeting. All right, so our third and next proclamation is for Law Enforcement, Records, and Support Personnel Day. Approximately 41% of Costa Mesa Police Department’s employees are civilian professionals. The Costa Mesa Police Department’s Record Bureau is an integral part of police operations. They are responsible for processing, maintaining, and distributing all police reports in the city. They process over 18,000 reports a year and are available 24/7 to meet the needs of our citizens and city. The Costa Mesa Property and Evidence Unit currently processes 10,000 evidence items per year and releases or destroys an average of 8,000 items per year. In 2021, the unit destroyed 5,000 drug-related evidence items that we got off the streets. So accepting the proclamation is going to be our own Police Chief Ron Lawrence and Records and Evidence Manager Olivia Rogers. And I’m going to read a little excerpt of the proclamation that they’ll receive. “The protection of Costa Mesa’s communities is dependent not only on individuals who devote their time and energy to the duties of law enforcement, but also who support staff such as law enforcement records and support personnel, who devote countless hours to performing the duties that keep law enforcement agencies running smoothly. Law enforcement records and support personnel in Costa Mesa play a crucial role in helping law enforcement agencies identify, pursue, capture, and process suspected lawbreakers, and they continually share their invaluable expertise and experience to assist in tracking felons, maintaining criminal statistics, and improving apprehension strategies. It is important to recognize the city of Costa Mesa’s law enforcement records and support personnel for their valuable contributions to our law enforcement system. I encourage all Costa Mesa residents to pay tribute to our records and support personnel and recognize their contributions to protecting our safety and quality of life.” Now, Chief Lawrence and Evidence Manager Rogers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and all council members. On behalf of the Records Bureau and the Property and Evidence Unit, we’d like to thank you all for your recognition of both of our departments and all the work put forth and the efforts, day in and day out, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by all of our team members. As public servants, we take pride in serving the city of Costa Mesa and its citizens. Thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. All right. Photo time. All right, we’re getting our steps in today. The final presentation is a proclamation for World Kindness Day. World Kindness Day was officially on November 13th, but it is never a bad time to choose to be kind. And we weren’t going to have a meeting on, that was on Sunday, so we weren’t going to have a meeting on Sunday anyway. World Kindness Day is an international holiday formed to raise awareness of the importance of kindness to help build a kinder and more compassionate world. The purpose of World Kindness Day is to highlight good deeds in the community, focusing on the positive and unifying power of kindness. With us tonight is Costa Mesa’s own Rebecca Robek, who goes to Vanguard University and is leading a kindness movement across our city schools by creating a student-led culture of unity through kindness, reminding students that they are cared for, loved, and valued. And Rebecca, come on up to the podium. We’ll have you say a few words, and while you’re going up there, I’ll read from the proclamation. “Kindness is a fundamental part of the human condition which bridges the division of race, religion, politics, and gender. World Kindness Day reminds us that compassion, empathy, humility, and respect are essential ingredients in creating and maintaining a kind and compassionate society. The Let’s Be Kind campaign strengthens our schools and community by facilitating meaningful change through simple acts of kindness to create a healthy school environment for all students. The city of Costa Mesa seeks to cultivate compassion and kindness throughout our city and local communities. I urge all Costa Mesa residents to recognize and celebrate World Kindness Day with kind gestures toward others. Kindness is contagious, and we can all participate in our own way.” Rebecca Robek, you have the floor.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor Stevens, Mayor Protem Mar, and city council members. It is such a blessing and honor to serve this community together. Thank you for recognizing Let’s Be Kind and the work we have done for the past six years. These past few months have been dedicated to working towards our Fall Let’s Be Kind Days. 18 schools are joining us this year. So far, Estancia High School, Early College High School, Back Bay High School, Cloud Campus, and T-Winkle Middle School have had their Let’s Be Kind Days, all of which were a huge success. It is amazing to see how our schools have taken Let’s Be Kind and made it their own. This week is our Let’s Be Kind Week for our elementary schools. The entire week is dedicated to celebrating kindness and teaching the students of its importance. Later this week, Costa Mesa High School and Costa Mesa Middle School will be joining the celebration. I am currently a freshman at Vanguard University, where I am majoring in liberal studies and minoring in business. This new season of my life has been both exciting and challenging as I learn to balance the work I do with Let's Be Kind in school. I am so incredibly grateful for our city and all of you who have celebrated with us and supported me personally since the beginning. The community at large has been impacted by our movement, and I hope you know the role you have played in making this possible. Again, thank you so much for the support you have given us.
Okay, we have one more presentation. I'm just kidding. That's it. That's our last presentation. Anyway, the four really good presentations. Now, we'll move to public comment. Public comment, you could talk about what's on the consent calendar or anything else in the world except what's on our agenda. You have up to three minutes. We have a super busy calendar tonight, so if you could do it in less than three minutes, that's great, but you have three minutes. Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
LA Times published an article several days ago called, "Is Turning Right on Red Light Your California Birthright?" Absolutely not. Quoted from the article, "Over the last decade, pedestrian deaths have risen by a whopping 54%. Cities are seeking ways to intervene, such as prohibiting drivers from turning right on red lights." The author of that article quotes this book, "There are no accidents." And in the back of the jacket, Singer, the author, challenges the reader to consider those deaths that are brushed off as accidents, which communities suffer the most from accidental harm. And who can use it? It was just an accident. Yesterday at 6:40 a.m., a driver hit and injured a pedestrian who was crossing Harbor Boulevard at Mesa Verde Drive. The driver hit and ran. The PD logged that event in as accident injury involving a pedestrian hit-and-run. The officer at the desk with whom I spoke this afternoon verified the information. My heart froze since a red light-running driver almost ran me down at that intersection. I remember crying all the way on my walk home. I sat at this intersection this afternoon for one hour, from 2:00 to 3:00, and I witnessed the following. Almost all drivers exceeded the speed limit. Seven drivers ran the red. Nineteen drivers made a right turn on red. Seven drivers drove through the intersection while pedestrians were crossing. Thirty-five pedestrians crossed. Two pedestrians crossed on red. One cyclist crossed on red. One scooterist crossed on red. Seven drivers obstructed crosswalk. Three police cars drove through. Eight cyclists, three people on motorized wheelchairs, one skateboarder, and four people on scooters used that intersection. A total of 51 vulnerable human beings crossed that intersection in the one hour. Please, Costa Mesa PD, place a motorcycle officer there for a few hours every day and issue citations. The life you might save might be a family member, or a friend, or me. Thank you.
All right, you have the floor.
So, I'm going to be here again about the gym at 1:40, 17th Street. So, in this CUP, it does say that they're not supposed to have aerobic workouts. We all know that they're having aerobic workouts. Nobody has still provided me with the 2021 CUP. They can only provide me with the 2019, and it's supposed to be updated every two years. You know, you go from 1992 to 2019 with absolutely no paperwork on this gym at all, you know? So, we're going to talk about the walls and subwoofers, you know, and how many subwoofers they should probably have in there, because nobody's told me how many they have, because they can get really high. You can literally feel the vibrations of the bass. I actually had my pizza delivery guy from Laventino's, it's really good, down on the peninsula. They told me that they'd tell me a petition for me, you know, because they could literally feel the bass. They asked me what was going on over there. I'm like, "Ah, that's her nightly concert that nobody does anything about." So, for a small system, it says that there should be PA speaker cabinets, and this is a small club. So, two high amplifier powers is a small club of 500 people. So, the first option, 300 people or less, that's probably what they should have in there. Nobody has provided any of this information, you know? So, the reason that the cops can't do anything about it is because you guys have to declare it a nuisance. You know, this gym wakes us up every day at 5:00 a.m., and some people actually get out their rotary saws now, and they'll just start running a rotary saw at 5:30 in the morning because the gym's waking everybody up anyways, you know? So, you know, might as well just do what you want over there. So, in our code, it does say that because it's caused by music and the vibrations from music, that it's supposed to lower the decibels by five at every, you know, it's supposed to only go up to 50 and not above 45, you know, before 7:00 a.m. So, I'm just wondering when any, if you guys could declare it a nuisance, you know, you want to get out of here early, you know, swing by about 7:30, wait for about five minutes, you'll probably hear it whenever you show up. It'll be like you're next to a concert, okay? If we could do something about this so the cops can find them, that'd be great, you know? And then maybe they'll quit, boom, 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 you know, whatever they want. Have a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Humphrey, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. First, I'd like to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving. Please be able to enjoy it with family and friends, and give thanks for the things that we have in this community. It's very important for all of us, so please enjoy Thanksgiving to the fullest. Secondarily, I'm very concerned about the size of this agenda. I realize that you get trapped with timing and things like that, I understand that. But on the heels of Measure K, it feels like another impediment to public input. Because let's face it, most people are not going to be able to stay awake till 1:00, 2:00 o'clock in the morning. And I remember meetings that went till 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning. So, they do happen, and they happen for a variety of reasons. But I would always like the council to be highly aware of making meetings that actually go so late that the public just finally can't participate any longer. They have to go to work, all those kinds of things. And it becomes impossible for them to give you viable input. So, this kind of an agenda, which includes some very important items on it, not to mention salaries at the very end of the meeting, when almost everybody's going to bed. So, please, keep that in mind. I would appreciate it that you guys work to have your agendas such that the public can participate on all items. And thank you very much for the evening.
Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving. Mr. Kokan.
Good evening, John. Good evening, Arlis, and good evening to the rest of the council and all the other ancillary members. John, as I recollect, the last thing you said to me was, "From your mouth to God's ears." Congratulations, and congratulations, Arlis. And that is really pretty much all I have to say. I haven't been here in three years. It's kind of nice to be back. Everything's new. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Costa Mesa City Council. My name is Ilya Ceglin. I'm here to plead you, honorable people, who was elected by the public for health and life of my innocent son, Nate Ceglin. And my family, some strange way, become acquainted to Costa Mesa City. First, we moved to Orange County because my son was kidnapped from my caring family on the basis of manufacturer report accusation sent to Child Protective Services and Police by mafia boss, Director of Regional Center, for personal profiteering, on expense of my innocent son Nate and the rest of my Jewish family observant descendant of Holocaust survivor. My son was kidnapped for personal profiteering of Orange County mafia boss, Director of Orange County Regional Center, Larry Landauer, with half a billion budget from public money that nobody supervised. First time my encounter with Costa Mesa was in 2007, when my son was separated from my family abuse and sent to Development Center in Costa Mesa that right now was closed because of complaint of public, because this is a center more, we can compare with Nazi camp. You cannot imagine what I could observe coming to this Development Center of Costa Mesa. And nobody cannot forget what these terrible people do for innocent people. I don't want to take time, because my time is three minutes, but I have some, another agenda, so I can something add to what I tell now.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Congratulations to Councilmember Chavez. Looks like you, regardless of whether or not the votes have been certified, looks like you came out a winner. I always appreciate us working together on the West Side and just the quality of life and improving, so congratulations. And as we wait for the votes to be finalized or certified, looks like Measure K, no on K, is prevailing for the moment, but things tend to change. I do have a couple of comments, so. One, I hope that never again, this council, however it is formed, you have any kind of ad hoc meetings. We tried that about eight years ago, and it didn't go well when the layoff notices were issued. Ad hoc meetings just are not fair to the public because decisions are made behind closed doors. And on something such as important as the development of Harbor and Newport Boulevard and density and transportation and all those issues, those meetings should have been public with minutes and agenda, and even at the very worst, with Zoom meetings. To that point, whatever happens going forward with the housing element, I did participate in the Zoom meetings for just kind of gathering input for the West Side where I live on the future, you know, where could we put those new developments? It was very poorly attended. Going forward, we need to have in-person engagement with the citizens and public forums on, you know, where the future development is going to be. But no more, you decide, and then we have to live with your decision because it hasn't been transparent. My focus has always been on transparency, whether with the city council or the school district. We, our taxes pay for our city and our schools, and we have a very good interest in knowing what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Bex Hayhoe. I have the privilege of being the Executive Director of United and Homelessness with Orange County United Way, and I am also a proud resident of Costa Mesa. I just want to say thank you for the proclamation earlier to Recognize Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. We have been helping lead a campaign of about 26 agencies that I know my colleague and fellow Costa Mesa resident is going to speak a little bit about and invite everybody to participate in a moment. We did have an incredible kickoff event on Monday, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you for the participation of the city manager. We deeply appreciated the remarks that you gave at that event, and we're very grateful to have Nate Robbins also in attendance. I was on your very first homeless task force about 10 years ago, and I just wanted to take this moment this week to say thank you for how far we have come. Elected leaders here in Costa Mesa have made bold decisions to move forward solutions to address homelessness. And your staff, over the last 10 years, have worked tirelessly to bring those recommendations from that original task force to life. The shelter, the outreach services that are provided, the rental assistance that's been given, the future development with the Motel 6, these are all incredible ways that we have been moving forward the work to address homelessness. And I look forward to Costa Mesa continuing to lead the way here in our community in Orange County. So, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to go and follow that?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
For continuity? Yes.
Set it up perfectly. Hi, my name is Addie McClellan. I'm the Community Engagement Manager for United and Homelessness, and I wanted to follow up our Executive Director Bex Hayhoe's comments by making the council members aware of some events and activities that are happening during this week as well. So, we're excited to share that in addition with 26 other agencies that have shaped this countywide campaign for this year's Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. We are presenting a lot of activities, both online and in person, for different residents to get involved and take a moment to reflect on their beliefs regarding housing. Earlier this year, Marcia Fudge, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, stated that housing was a human right, and we wanted to give every resident in OC that an opportunity to contemplate this idea and come to their own conclusions. So, everyone here, everyone, is welcomed and invited to attend a virtual event happening on Thursday, November 17th, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. It is happening via Zoom, and this event is called, "Is Housing a Human Right: A Virtual Discussion." And this discussion will feature speakers from the housing, health, and academic worlds as they share their perspectives on housing and the work that they do and consider and talk about housing as a human right. We'll have Dr. Zoe Fraggans from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, John Gould from UC Irvine's School of Social Ecology, and Kristi Wimber, a prominent international speaker, former pastor, and author, all speaking during this event. We'll also have video remarks from HUD's Regional Administrator Jason Pugh, who is the Regional Administrator for Region 9. There will also be a coffee talk happening on Thursday, November 17th, at 6:00 p.m. for the central OC area at Seven Leaves Cafe, where residents are encouraged to attend, grab a free cup of coffee or tea, and converse with each other and connect about their different beliefs and reflect on how they see housing. If anyone's interested in learning more, we encourage everyone to go to u2eh.to/hhaw to learn more and get involved. Thank you all so much, and thank you for the proclamation, acknowledging this week.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vuksevich.
Good evening, Council. I guess I just wanted to kind of carry on the notes of some of the previous speakers. I think Flo's comments come to mind about certain actions in our society being a choice, really, an intentional policy choice. And so I think traffic violence is a great one to bring up, that we've intentionally made our roads a certain way in a certain capacity and emphasizing on the certain flow of vehicles that has led to children dying, the elderly dying, and pedestrians dying, and even people in vehicles dying. And that's an intentional choice that we made as a society. I also think that homelessness is an intentional choice that we make as a society on a policy level because we are missing the homes we need in California. We're missing the homes we need in Costa Mesa. And it's a little sad to me because first, that's a choice. It's not an inevitability. And it's also sad to me because that's what Measure K would have fixed. And I'm not calling Measure K yet. You know, there's a lot of vote left to count. But that's what Measure K would have done is really fought the, you know, our high rates of rent here in Orange County, and it also would have dealt with homelessness. And just reading from a report here from USC, so Orange County, with one of the highest household incomes, ranked 66th out of 3,000 counties with only 3% unemployment, has a strong diversified economy. And despite its been business-friendly reputation, the housing market is very high for both renters and owners, and it was likely a factor in some outmigration during the pandemic. And that outmigration is low-income folks who can't afford to live in Orange County anymore. And it's just a shame that I actually do think some people were hoodwinked to the believing that Measure K was something that it wasn't. Measure K would have allowed planning authority back to the council, would have allowed and would have actually stopped something called the builder's remedy, which if some people aren't familiar with the builder's remedy, right now, in the city of Costa Mesa, someone could build a 60-story tall building right now because of a state law essentially. And Measure K would have brought us in compliance with that. But instead of having the city of Costa Mesa decide, where do we want our affordable housing? Where do we want our market rate housing? Where do we want our luxury housing? Where do we want our veterans' housing? We don't get to make that decision, which is, all it does is it hurts the people at the bottom. And so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, hello, everyone, mayor, council members. My name is Angelina Enra de Vallarta. I am a resident of Costa Mesa now for six years, and I also have the honor to serve in the Parks and Community Services Commission for District 4. And I'm here to share a little bit about and chime on the homeless Awareness Week as we choose to come to this meeting tonight to share our highlight on really how this is a human right. And again, just wanted to reiterate, we all know what the results of our point-in-time count were. 208 people experiencing homelessness, 150 unsheltered, and 58 unsheltered. And the vulnerability of those community members, because I always say, they are our neighbors, right? They are Costa Mesa residents. They simply lack a home. 18 of those have passed away while on house in 2022. And, you know, from my perspective, serving on the Parks Commission, we hear frequently from the community how we want our parks to be safe because they are concerned that there's homeless people there. We want the restrooms to be clean enough so that we can use it, or maybe we should close the bathrooms so that they can be accessible to everyone. But again, I just reiterate, these are Costa Mesa residents. They deserve the right to our parks and restrooms just as much as any other residents. So again, I understand there's still more to hear from the upcoming measure, but I'm sure this wonderful team of community leaders can help us to continue to look for opportunities where we can find housing to bring this unsheltered number of 208 to zero. I know there's the creativity, the power, and the need. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Rick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I have long recognized that my passion for environmentalism was offset by my involvement in designing and building and development. Do I stop development, or do I encourage it to make a living? I've always been interested in preserving open space and historic buildings. I love older neighborhoods, ranging from those with modest craftsman-style homes to the mansions of Pasadena and San Marino. I also love big vibrant cities such as Los Angeles, New York, Dublin, Paris, filled with high-rise apartment complexes. So all this leads me to my involvement in cities' planning issues. I advocate for slowing down the rush to develop for high-density housing. We need to involve the residents in long-range, comprehensive planning that replaces the market-driven process that results in uncoordinated development. The public debate regarding the housing element and the issue of voter approval seems to have returned us to the political acrimony of six years ago. But I believe everyone on both sides of the policy debate has good intentions and the best interests of the city in mind. Nobody is trying to ruin the city, but there are many different interest groups vying for attention. Urban planning is inherently political and subject to heated debate, but let's put that aside and collaborate to plan for a vibrant, livable city by being respectful and tolerant. I have personally worked with and for the election of most of the folks on the dais, despite not always agreeing with their policy positions. I also know many of the commission and committee members and admire their dedication. We have a great group of people involved in civic affairs. I look forward to working together to engage the residents in an effort to reach a consensus on voter approval of the general plan amendments contemplated by the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else who wishes to speak in the chambers. On Zoom, do we have anybody? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker. Kevin, please.
You have the floor, Mr. Kleese.
I think you mean Kevin St. George, but it really isn't Kevin St. George. It's Hank Castiglioni. I'm back in Boston, and I had to jump into this meeting on a friend's computer, but I wanted to remind everybody that the Orange County Model Engineers will be giving free rides this coming weekend. It is, after all, the third weekend of the month. But this time, the Orange County Model Engineers are partnering with the Goat Hill Junction Lions Club, and we're sponsoring the Marines Toys for Tots Toys Collection. So we're asking everybody in the city, come on by, bring an unwrapped toy. Even if you don't ride the trains, drop it in the box. The Marines will be very appreciative. Help out an underprivileged child. And once again, we have a store, and it's filled with toys. So come on by, buy a toy at the store, drop it in the box for the Marines, and help both the Orange County Model Engineers and the Goat Hill Junction Lions Club make a very special Christmas for underprivileged children. So once again, it's snowing here tonight, and I can't wait to come home. See you all later and hope you come by the trains this weekend. Have fun.
Thanks, thanks, Hank.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Safe travels. Okay, now we're going to move to council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. First up, from the great District 6, Councilmember Jeffrey Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the mayor's edict tonight, I will be very brief. First, Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Hope everybody gets to enjoy some time with their friends and family in the coming week. And then all I really want to say tonight is congratulations to the Newport Harbor High School Boys' varsity water polo team. Oh, yeah, I see some fans over here. They defeated Jay Sarah this weekend to win their second CIF Open Championship, second in a row. It's quite an accomplishment, and I'm sure we'll have them in council hopefully after the first of the year. That's all tonight.
Thank you very much, council member. From District 1, Councilmember Donald Harper.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to help the mayor out here and move the meeting along, and I'll pass on comments this evening.
Thank you very much. From District 5, Councilmember Arlis Reynolds.
All right, thank you. Wanted to do a couple of quick thank yous to some of our staff. I suspect he's not here, but our arborist, Jim Ortiz, has always been very responsive when there are any tree issues from our residents. I met a resident recently who said she thought her tree was dead. I told her who to contact. I went back and checked on her a couple of weeks later, and I wasn't sure I was actually at her house because it was a different tree. And Jim had already been there. They found out the tree was actually dead, and they replaced it. So I want to thank him for his responsiveness. And also, a reminder, if we could add a webpage with information about the tree program, we do have offering to plant trees in front of residents' homes who don't already have one. So thank you to Jim, and let's share some information about that program. The proclamation on hunger and homelessness reminded me of some facts I had learned a while ago about a waiting list for our Meals on Wheels program. And I was interested in information, maybe that's Nate Robbins now, some information if we could get that because I think we do have some money still from different COVID relief funds that maybe could be used. But just the thought of folks signing up for meals and us not having enough to give them worries me, especially as we go into the holiday season. So it'd be great to get some more information on that. Lots to talk about, safe streets, of course, a big issue. We've been doing a lot in the city, and I was really pleased to see our police department out finding people who are biking without lights and then collaborating with our transportation team to give out some of the lights we have for our program, literally, you know, solving a problem on site. I was really happy to see that, and that's just another mark of the growing collaboration to address the issue of safe streets in the city. I know Ms. Martin's also been reporting on all of the enforcement citations, so I'm happy to see our officers out there, you know, trying to stop the bad behavior on the streets and the reckless driving. A couple of quick notes on events coming up. So Sunday, November 20, that's this weekend on Sunday, there's a group that's organizing to hang lights, Christmas lights, for seniors in our community who can't do it for themselves. So in the Spirit of Kindness Week, that may be something you're interested in helping out with, a fun way to get to know some neighbors and help some seniors in our community. And then the following weekend, right after Thanksgiving, there is our annual Turkey Trot event. This is at Belerick Park, a really fun biking festival, fun to be a spectator, fun to participate. I encourage you all to come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Councilmember Chavez from District 4.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and to everyone watching, Happy Thanksgiving, because last time you'll see us before the holidays. Just want to give a quick update for residents that use OCTA. You've probably been noticing the past few weeks, there's been a lot of intermittent transit issues with the bus lines occasionally not operating. That's because OCTA is currently negotiating with their mechanics, and there may be some sporadic disruptions to services. I personally cover OCTA, my job in the county of Orange, and I'm a little disappointed that they have not solved this issue. I know this issue disproportionately affects folks in my district who may not have access to a car, so optimistic and hopeful that this will be resolved quickly. Furthermore, you guys may have heard about the big protests going on on all the UC campuses. Just update on that, there is about 48,000 students at UCI who are being affected currently by a lot of TA staff, a lot of research staff not working. UC System is a crown jewel of California. I am a product of UC Irvine. I'm very proud to go to school there. But what I'm not proud of is seeing our state just take an enormous amount of fees from us, the residents, and not pay their grad students a clean wage. So I hope you guys can understand what's going on in the UC system. It seems to be a lot of riled-up issues right now with workers throughout the country, both with OCTA and with UC System. And finally, I just want to reiterate the point that some folks want to make right now, which is why is California taking so long counting ballots? As we've heard a couple of times right now, some folks on the dais don't know if they won their elections yet. We saw some races in congressional seat that we don't know if we won yet. And the reason why is because California pride itself in being a true democracy. We pride ourselves in allowing every citizen's vote to be counted, and we allow citizens to vote in a myriad of ways, maybe drop ballot, drop off boxes, vote day of election, or even mailing the ballot in day of election. That means it's messy. That means it takes a longer count votes. But that does mean inherently that society is a lot more democratic because everyone's vote does matter, and everyone's voice does matter. So please a little bit of patience as the state calculates all the tallies, and just for sure that all this means is that your vote and your voice truly matters in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamaros from District 2.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In lieu of our very heavy-weighted agenda tonight, I'm going to pass on comment. Happy holidays.
Mayor Pro Tem Mar from District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to follow up on the comments of a couple of speakers related to traffic violence. That's a really good, powerful term. I think that's exactly what it is, and I'm glad that was noted by a few folks. I think Mr. Setharam and I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, but I think now that the state has allowed us to lower speed limits, I'd very much like to look at which streets we can tackle first with lower speed limits in addition to the additional, the traffic calming measures that we've tried in the past, you know, not walking to neighborhoods the last couple of months. Certainly Presidio Drive, I've received a lot of complaints about. Would love to try one of our experiments, right? Roundabouts or something else on Presidio and try it out. I'd also like to see us agendize a discussion about cannabis dispensaries. I've brought this up before. I'm concerned about the number that we have, the displacement that we're seeing of other businesses. And I think it's time we have a sufficient volume that has passed through the process and some opening shortly to look at potential ordinance modifications and at least understand what our options are there. I don't know that I have the votes to make any change, but I think it's important that we discuss those things. And then last but not least, and I'll keep it pretty short. So yes, as Councilwoman Chavez mentioned, not all of us know the results of our election, but given that it's Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week, I just want to double down on the fact that despite all of our efforts and all of the agenda items that you'll see today, if we want to actually do anything about homelessness and hunger, we got to do something about housing. And so win or lose in this election, I am comfortable with the fact that we need to do absolutely everything we can as a council to continue chipping away on providing more opportunities for housing in this community. And whether I do that from the dais or I do it from one of those tables, I'm going to keep doing it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, for my part, some of you may remember we had an election, I guess it was last week. Thank you to the voters. As of right now, based on the count, just on what's been counted, 47% of the voters in Costa Mesa registered voters voted. That's pretty decent for a midterm election. Thank you to the election workers, who, as Councilmember Chavez said, are still working very hard at the registrar of voters and counting votes. And thank you to the candidates. This is my fourth election, my third city-wide election. It takes a lot of courage to put your name on the ballot, win or lose. Thank you very much to the candidates for that community service and putting yourself out there. And Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. We have a lot to be thankful for. I'm thankful for this group up on the dais. I'm thankful for a beautiful public and a beautiful city that I can serve and the great staff of the city of Costa Mesa. So let's have a wonderful holiday. But before we do that, let's get to work. We've got our consent, sorry, we've got our city manager report. I want to get to that consent calendar, but we want to hear from the city manager and then the city attorney. City manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time and the long agenda this evening, I will refrain from comments.
Okay. City attorney.
I have nothing to say except happy holidays, everyone.
Way to go. All right. Consent calendar. So for consent calendar, these are matters that are routine and are considered enacted upon in one motion unless somebody pulls one of the items. In this case, we have at least one item that's been pulled, and that's Consent Calendar, item number seven, which is the Resolution Regarding the Iranian-American Community and Condemning Violence Against Women. And for my part, I'm going to be recusing myself from item three on the consent calendar due to campaign contributions from people who are on the warrants. So with that...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
A member of the public has also requested to pull item number nine, the Police Department Underground Storage Tank Closure Project.
Okay, so we got number seven and number nine that are going to be excluded. I'm recused on three. We have a motion from Councilmember Reynolds. Do we have a second? Okay. Call for the question on the balance besides seven and nine.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, well done. We did that. So now, let's move... All right, well done. We did that. So now, let's move to item...
Item number seven.
Item number seven.
This is the resolution of the City Council, the City of Costa Mesa, supporting the Iranian-American community and condemning violence against women.
Okay. So after the staff presentation, we're going to have a brief presentation, and then we're going to go open to public. Then the council will have time for questions and comments. Each member of the public will have three minutes to speak. First, we will take comments from those that are in the chambers, then on Zoom. And we will only have one time period for each group. There will be no going back and forth. Anyway, I have a little script here, but this is pretty much what you all know. Okay, so, staff presentation. On item number seven?
There is no staff presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, it says, it said after staff presentation, so it's kind of head fake, but we open it up to public comment?
Sure.
Let's open it up to public comment. Anybody in the chambers? No?
Yes, we have a member of the public that wishes to speak on this.
Okay, wonderful. Hold on, sir, I got to get your mic hot. Sorry. There you go, you have it. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and Costa Mesa City Council. My name is Elliot Seglin. I full-heartedly support joining the City Council Resolution 2022-20, which supports Iranian-American community and condemning violence against women. I believe that, that, that a lady who was, I believe, was mayor of Costa Mesa City Council, was elected to the Board of Supervisors. When she mentioned at the board that she surprised that the board did nothing in resolving the situation with my son Nate, then I realize that I support this courageous and honest woman who now is the Board of Supervisors. My second encounter with Costa Mesa was when my son, after being experimenting with dangerous drug without his consent and consent of his family, he was abused, neglected, mistreated, and now he was sent to Santa Ana Group Home next to Fairview. That is, as I mentioned before, is was closed by the public. And especially, I remember he was helpful, very helpful to closing this terrible place by police brother. This courageous officer was, could not stand when his brother was killed in this facility, and he started campaign, and public supported this campaign, and finally it's closed. But the next to this place, Fairview Development Center, this is place where my son, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's your time, sir. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'll, on item number calendar, sorry, consent calendar, item number seven, we have a motion from Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Mayor Protem Mar. Councilmember Chavez, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Approved staff recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember Mar, do you wish to speak? No? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, now we have consent calendar item number nine.
Yes, this item was also polled by the member of the public. This is the Police Department Underground Storage Closure Project. The same member of the public.
Okay. It, okay, so we'll open it up to public comment. Go ahead, sir. Is this about the underground storage you're going to talk to us about?
Yes.
You promise? Sir?
I'm sorry?
Sir, confine your comments, please, to the item before us, the consent calendar item, okay?
Okay.
Only talk about this underground storage for the police. Do you have any comments on that?
I'm sorry, not.
Okay, then thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Councilmember Gamaros, all for the question.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Mar, yeah, thank you. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Thank you for moving so quickly through the consent calendar, council. Now we have our first public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Thank you. This is a public hearing regarding the Development Impact Fees Annual Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, and the Traffic Impact Fee Analysis. Staff presentation by Ms. Molina, Finance Director.
Ms. Molina, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, before you tonight is the recommendation to approve the annual Development Impact Fee and Traffic Fee Analysis Report. As per the State Code 66066 annually, local agencies are required to prepare annual reports of the development impact fees that the city obtains and expenses from within 100 days of the close of the fiscal year. The report before you describes the fee, the amount of the fees collected in this prior fiscal year, and any expenses from those funds. We have four impact fees in the City of Costa Mesa. The park development impact fee to provide additional funding for improved improvements in parks or recreational improvements. The drainage impact fees, there are developer fees for additional construction and maintenance of the city's drainage system. The traffic impact fees, developer fees that provide funding for additional or improved traffic signal operations and infrastructure, and our fire system development fees. These are fees that provide for additional fire protection facilities, equipment, and paramedic support. In the fiscal year that just ended, on June 30, 2022, before you are the fundings for our preliminary numbers for the park development fees. You can see that we've started the year with $4.6 million. We obtained revenues of about 1.2, spent 2.2, and we ended about 3.6. In our drainage fees, 2.1 million, obtained about 300,000 in revenue, spent 145, and we ended the year about 2.2. In our traffic impact fees, we started with 5.5 million, obtained revenues of about 300,000, spent about 130, for about 5.6. In our fire system fees, we have about 635,000. At this moment in time, for the traffic impact fee annual review, I'll return it over to Public Works Director Rajah Setharaman.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Molina. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, so we have a traffic impact fee ad-hoc committee, and the committee met on October 20, 2022 to review the traffic impact fee analysis. So we presented a detailed analysis of the program. We looked at all the projects that were completed, adjusted for that. We applied escalation factors for the project improvements that are to be completed over the next few years. And based on that, there was a revised calculation of the traffic impact fee of $232 per average daily trip. Now, as you, about four, five years ago, we adjusted our traffic impact fee program to consider active transportation projects as well as signal synchronization projects. So those were included as part of this analysis. As Ms. Molina mentioned, we have a fund balance now of $5.6 million approximately, and we have projects that are currently in the books that we have identified expenditures for of over about $3.2 million. And a bulk of that is expected to happen in the next year or so, year or Along with this report, there is a resolution that we request your approval. And this resolution would continue the current impact fees of 235 per ADT, and we can follow the policy of allocating up to 10% of the fees towards traffic signal synchronization projects and ensure that all the fees can be applied towards active transportation projects also. We included, because we are doing active transportation projects that reduce automobile trips, there is a reduction of 5% of trips that will be applied when we collect the traffic impact fees. So that's part of the resolution also. With that, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions for staff? Mayor Protem, do you have a question? Councilmember Harland?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if it's for Ms. Molina or Mr. Setharaman, but in attachment one of the staff report, page nine, I just wanted to go through some of the tables here for the different fees, and starting with this year's fees. So park development fees, it looks like it's almost $1.3 million. Do you know approximately how many units that comes from?
We don't have the detail at this point, but we can bring that back to you.
Okay, all right. And then, I think this is more for clarification in that same attachment. There's the fee schedule for single-family dwelling units, multifamily dwelling units, and apartment dwelling units. I'm making the assumption that multifamily refers to condos, correct?
Multifamily can be condos or apartments, too. So it depends on each, yeah, if you have apartments up there, then it is condos.
Okay. And then, you know, looking through some of the historical data, so there's a few tables which identify the fees that were collected between 2017 and 2022, and they may vary by the fee. When are the fees actually collected? So is it at issuance of certificate of occupancy or pulling of a building permit? And are they the same for each fees?
I can answer that, councilmember. Typically, the fees are collected at the, prior to issuance of building permit. There is some flexibility for staff to collect prior to certificate of occupancy, but usually it's the former.
Okay, so for 2018, where we had nearly 4.6 million, that was when building permits were pulled for projects. So they were presumably entitled well before then, right, 2016, there about, or even before that?
Very likely before that, yes.
Okay, so there may be a significant lag, too, in when we've collected fees, when, as opposed to when projects were actually approved and entitled.
That is correct.
Okay. So then, does it make sense that, for example, if you compare the park development fees, the Quimby fees, and the drainage fees, so in 2018, we had $4.6 million revenue collected, but in 2018, for drainage fees, it's only 113,000, which is, seems very low. So is there a different time period when that fee is collected?
So I know for traffic impact fees, those are collected at the time of certificate of occupancy. So the drainage fees, it varies depending on if the project implements improvements on-site, they get some credit towards that, so that might have something to do with it.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, my kind of takeaway from all of this is that without having kind of a constant, or at least regular, development occurring, we have some major inconsistency, and it's a little difficult to plan for budgeting purposes, how much we actually pull in every year. I'll get back to that later, but those are my questions right now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay. I just have one little quick question. So I think, I don't know exactly what page, you were on, Councilmember Harland, but just looking at page nine of the report, it has fees that were collected, and then investment earnings, then it has a number of losses. It's been, I guess, a tough year for some investments. Where are these fees invested?
We invest the revenues mostly either through the Leif or through the Chandler Investments. So we've been, overall, in comparison to how the market's been doing, we've actually been faring a little bit better than the actual market.
Okay, right. All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Let's open it up to the public, public comment. I don't see anybody rushing to the podiums on this item. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and I will entertain a motion on this matter. Councilmember Reynolds?
Movestop recommendation.
And seconded by Councilmember Mar. Do you wish to speak to the motion, either the movement or the second?
No.
Okay, wonderful. Then let's call for the question.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Harland, thank you. Motion carries seven zero.
What was that, Councilmember?
Our screens have the next agenda item on them. I'm sorry, what?
Our screens haven't updated. It's the wrong agenda item.
Oh, yeah. Good, thank you. Thank you for catching that. But, so it's on our screens for the public, on our screens it says item two, but we're voting on item one. Are you, is there any confusion about what we just did, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, everything's cool for the record. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, councilmembers. And so now, our screens are going to be right because we're moving on to public hearing number two.
Well, I'm not sure if my screen's going to be right.
All right, let's just, let's just...
There we go.
Make sure we get it right. When they're ready, you let us know. Okay. So, public hearing item number two. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Thank you. This is the appeal of planning application 21-07 for a conditional use permit to allow off-site valet parking on the property located at 1645 Superior Avenue and for outdoor seating for an existing restaurant located at 1661 Superior Avenue, Suite C and D, and zoning application 19-50 for a minor conditional use permit to amend the previous approval for the restaurant. Staff presentation by Mr. Arios, Associate Planner.
Hold on, Mr. Arios. Councilmember Harland?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll be recusing myself from this item tonight. My youngest daughter is an employee of Trenta, so I will not be participating in these deliberations.
We will miss you.
All right.
Okay. We'll let you know when we can go on to the next one. Mr. Arios, you now have the floor.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Justin Arios, Associate Planner. And as described, the item before you is an appeal of planning application 21-07 and zoning application 19-50. The project site is located along Superior Avenue between West 16th Street and West 17th Street. Physical on-site improvements include an 8,446-square-foot single-story multi-tenant building with a 25-space parking lot and two points of ingress/egress located on Superior. Here are some site photos of the project site, both with the proposed outdoor patio and without, in addition to the proposed valet parking location on the bottom-right photo. The properties are zoned to M- The properties are zoned to MG, general industrial, and have a general plan land use designation of light industrial. The subject properties are also located within the 19 West Urban Plan. The project is also, is surrounded by properties with the same zoning designation, and there are also nearby residential communities developed pursuant to approved urban plans. As it relates to prior land use approvals, on June 22, 2017, the zoning administrator approved minor conditional use permit application ZA 17-16, allowing a deviation from shared parking requirements for a proposed restaurant, Superior Pie and Liquor, with more than 300 square feet of public seating area, including a 245 square foot outdoor patio. The approval was based on offset hours of operation of the restaurant in relation to other businesses onsite and was conditioned with specific hours of operation. Trenta Pizza and Pachina took over the entitlements from Superior Pie and Liquor and began operating at the site in 2019. On November 30, 2020, during the COVID pandemic, a temporary use permit, or TUP, for outdoor dining was approved for the current restaurant. The TUP approved the use of onsite parking spaces to accommodate an additional 842 square foot outdoor patio, an additional, sorry, 842 square feet of outdoor patio seating area. The TUP will expire on December 31, 2023, as extended by the city council at their November 1 meeting. This outdoor seating area was proposed and approved by the TUP and is improved with artificial turf, portable planters, and empty wine barrels separating the seating area from the drive aisle, as well as portable propane heaters. The applicant originally requested the following: to allow the restaurant to occupy Suite C in addition to Suite D; to permanently allow the use of the temporary outdoor seating area approved by the TUP; to modify the previously approved hours of operation; and to allow the use of off-site valet parking at 1645 Superior to meet parking requirements. Here's the site plan of the project site. The red shaded areas were approved by the previous minor conditional use permit, and the green shaded areas are included with the proposed project. The project was heard by the Planning Commission at their September 12 meeting. During the hearing, the applicant requested to add weekday lunchtime hours. Following presentations, public comments, and commission discussion, the Planning Commission deliberated and approved the project as presented at their meeting on a six-to-one vote. As part of their approval, the Planning Commission added a condition of approval to allow the requested weekday lunchtime hours, conditioned upon the submittal and approval of a parking management plan, and limiting the outdoor dining area to the originally approved 245 square foot patio during those hours. On September 19, an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of the project was filed by a neighboring resident. In summary, the application for appeal, provided as an attachment to the report, noted the following topics and areas of concern: parking shortage, safety concerns, resident and community objection, need for a traffic study, and evening noise impacts. The restaurant is located within a multi-tenant parking, located within a multi-tenant center with parking calculated based on the shared parking demand calculation. Based on the shared parking demand calculation for the project site and the current mix of uses, the total required parking is 38 spaces and can be grouped into three categories: evening hours, when both patio areas would be utilized; weekend lunchtime hours, only utilizing the smaller patio area; and weekday lunchtime hours, also only utilizing the smaller patio area. For the evening hours, the parking requirement is provided through a combination of onsite parking and off-site valet parking. For lunchtime hours during the weekend, the parking requirement is provided onsite because other onsite businesses are closed and only the smaller patio would be used. For lunchtime hours during the weekdays, which were requested at the Planning Commission meeting, with only the smaller patio being used, was approved by the Planning Commission subject to city approval of a parking management plan. As it relates to the proposed valet plan and potential impacts associated with the project, the Transportation Division confirmed that the proposed modifications to the existing restaurant are anticipated to perform sufficiently without interruptions to the city's local circulation system and does not necessitate a traffic study. Pursuant to code, a traffic study is required when a project generates more than 100 peak daily trips. The proposed project would generate 24 peak daily trips. In addition, the building, fire, and police departments have reviewed the proposal, and no safety issues are anticipated. Regarding noise, as part of the Planning Commission's consideration and approval, condition number 16 was included to ensure that any potential noise impacts, noise generating sources from the valet operation are minimized, including valet attendants keeping their voices low, keeping car radios off, and not revving engines during operations. In addition, the use is required to comply with the city's noise ordinance. Furthermore, approval for the adjacent residential projects included a standard condition of approval requiring a notice to buyers. The purpose of the notice is to disclose that the project is located within an area designated as light industri, sorry, industry in the city's general plan and is subject to existing and potential annoyances or inconveniences associated with industrial land uses. This slide here provides the required findings for conditional use permit applications per the zoning code. And staff believes that the proposed project conforms with the required findings because the site will be in conformance with code-required parking requirements for the restaurant and would maintain a surplus of customer parking with the implementation of off-site valet. The valet parking plan has been reviewed by the city's Transportation Division and would be implemented by a professional valet service operator. In addition, the existing restaurant is a complementary use to the area, including the adjacent residential uses, and does not generate noise or parking impacts unusual for an industrially-zoned property. Furthermore, the outdoor seating does not adversely impact the surrounding uses. With that, staff recommends that the city council uphold the Planning Commission's decision and find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA under section, SEQA guideline section 15301 for existing facilities, and approve planning application 21-07 and zoning application 1950, subject to conditions of approval. That concludes staff presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? I don't see, oh, Councilmember Reynolds, yes.
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. I had two questions. One was related to the noise concerns, and then the second, a question related to the parking counts. So I had watched the Planning Commission hearing on this, was interested in how that was going to play out, especially since we've been looking at our outdoor dining ordinance. And I recall, and have also spoken to some neighbors who were concerned, who were not adjacent to Trenta, but who are adjacent to the car wash. And so I appreciate the condition that I think the Planning Commission added, which you noted was 16. One of the other things mentioned was the concern about just lots of car doors slamming late at night. Do you see any problems if we were to add something related to, you know, adding to the conditions that valet operators won't slam car doors? Yeah, okay. And then I was also interested in looking at the parking counts, and you mentioned the surplus in parking. If we were to just go by the calculated parking requirements, the valet site, the proposed valet site is almost twice as big as it needs to be. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with exactly with the square footage that's on the car wash site, but it does appear to have sufficient parking, especially at the industrial rate, which is three per thousand.
Right, okay, great. So that looked to me as an opportunity, again, to address some of the noise concerns. Would it be appropriate to put in a, as part of the condition, just a requirement that they sort of front-load the valet parking site, so you're loading at the street first and minimizing use of the parking spaces by the residences? Any, many concerns there?
I don't see any concerns.
No, okay. One other thing that we've talked about as a council, lots of pre-COVID conversations on many of these things, and that was when there were requests related to parking that we might have a requirement related to at least some bike parking? Do you know if there's bike parking on the site? I know there's a bike shop on the site.
I do not recall. That might be a question better for the applicant.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant when they put that in. Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for the staff? Okay. And then, Mr. Arios, so do we, are we going to hear from the applicant now, or, sorry, the appellant, or what's, the appellant is the right way to go?
Yeah, I think the appellant has a presentation.
So the appellant has the floor if they wish to make any presentations. And then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, and then we'll open it up for public comment. And then after the, who gets, who gets, hold on one second, sir. Who gets the rebuttal when there's an appeal? Like, after everybody's talked, is it the appellant or the?
Both, the appellant and the applicant do on new items that were mentioned during public comment.
Okay, excellent. So what, so just so everybody knows, so we'll go to appellant, then we'll go to the applicant, then we'll go to the public, and then if the, if the public brings up something that wasn't raised in the presentations that you're going to make before public comment, then you'll have an opportunity, both of you, to make a rebuttal. And then we'll close public comment, and then the council will take action. So, sir, you are the appellant, so you have the floor.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Chris Riley. I'm a resident that lives within 500 foot of the facility, and I am the appellant. I have about a 10-page presentation here. There is some videos to show you of the impact. And unfortunately, I was asking for the presentation that was made today, earlier this week, but have not been given it. This isn't just about valet parking, as I'll go through. This is a temporary use permit. And temporary tends to mean it comes to an end.
Sir, could you do me a favor? Could you move your, the microphone a little bit closer?
Sorry.
It works best if it's about six inches from where you're speaking. Thank you.
So this is a, sorry, this is a temporary use permit. Temporary means it should come to an end. It was for a purpose during COVID, and it's now being leveraged into a way of bypassing all norms of Planning Commission requirements. And that was discussed at the meeting. I'm glad some of you have reviewed the video. There's patron safety issues in this. I'll take you through some photographs. There is no separation of vehicles and patrons. In fact, the separation units could become projectiles. There is significant noise and pollution that exceed the noise that was allowed within the original development of West 17th, from one open area to another. And there's light impactors there as well. In terms of vehicles, this will produce somewhere in the region of 100 to 200 movements at peak times. I'll take you through that in a diagram. I do significantly differ, as did many of the commission members, with the counts of traffic onsite and the utilization of Beach Cities, which has a 4pm curfew because of noise that I believe Councilmember Alice Harland, sorry, Alice Reynolds, had an impact or an experience of when viewing some of the residences there. The idea was that we were planned and developed as a community so that at 4 o'clock, something that creates 65 decibels of sound inside with windows closed was not to continue past that. It usually goes to 5 o'clock. Now, we're going to put a car park in there. That's not what was agreed for West 17th. Beach Cities car park has a curfew at 4 o'clock. If you vote for this, you are voting against the very reason that West 17th was built, which was to allow quiet enjoyment in the evening. You would not like to take a 4 o'clock curfew and extend it to 11 o'clock, less than 20 feet from the front of your home. That's not a decision a normal council would make. In fact, Beach Cities owner lives in the community, but bought a property on the other side, on the Pomona side. I believe there may well be a resident, Ryan Hibisco, that was in the commission. He's possibly on Zoom, I don't know, is he? He was, he was speaking to Alice, and they had a 45-second wait because of the noise that came on out of that facility. There is, I'm going to show you just a couple of videos, there's a lot on the disc, there's chaotic scenes on Saturdays in there, there's dangerous parking down Superior. It doesn't help that vehicles just stop, pick people up. There is no working mitigation. This whole approval was based on working mitigation. There is no lunchtime mitigation because Beach City car parks is full of cars being cleaned and making noise. And in the evening, again, your movements of vehicles is very, very significant. You go on and off the facility to drop off, you go on and off the parking, and then the vehicle is brought on and off back on. So you have six movements per vehicle for any patron that comes in, and they are running a valet parking system today. It'll impact quite an enjoyment of the property as it is today. There's been reduction in values in one of the properties over there because of Beach Cities. And we don't believe that the city has accounted for staff parking. When you've got 10 to 12 people having to park vehicles as staff, then you have a parking issue which is exacerbated, given that the tables are now utilizing the very parking that should be there for the patrons. This needs to go back to an inside restaurant. Proprietors are ignoring, they operate way more than the 842 feet. They go across the parking, I'll show you photographs of it. The proprietors leave this eyesore out quite regularly during the day, which precludes the mixed-use parking. I fully understand you can't have people there all of the time. We've now got an event center which has been added to it. I'm unsure if the city has calculated what the impact of that is, but another facility is opened up onsite. And in summary, there's other restaurants that would do a far better job housing this business very, very close by, and they should be availing themselves of that. So looking at it, there's no additional restrooms. We've taken a restaurant and more than tripled it, without any additional restrooms being added to it. There's no electrical plan for outside. It's jury-rigged with the same sort of extension cords that you would use for Christmas lights. The lighting is left on all day. It's an icefall when you look at it. They're utilizing parking to store the delineation equipment. Again, I'll show you a photograph in a moment, it's far better. So they're actually utilizing parking that should not be utilized for storage. Worse, in inclement weather, when marquees are erected, there's a safety issue, there's carbon monoxide issues with heaters in, and obviously a fire issue. Also, if you look at the original planning for West 17th, the fire side of it was to be able to get to the perimeter of all of the buildings. You can do that on Pomona, you can do that on 17th Street, you can't do that on Superior when there's a car park full of people and patrons. So, sorry. That is the daily storage onsite. On the left there, you can see there's one or two parking units for that equipment. That should not be there, it's supposed to be taken offsite. Patron safety, there's no barriers, and this was discussed heavily at the commission. There is no safety factor for the patrons. This isn't a bio beware, this is a moral obligation that needs to be addressed. Whether it be electrocution, whether it be carbon monoxide, it's all there. In this particular, I don't know if I've got a pointer here, but this is the original metal fence that demarcates the 245 square foot of outside space. As you can see, these are all wheeled planters. Something hits that recently 10, 12 miles an hour, it's projectile, and people are dining behind that in over 1,000 square foot today. It's not 842, it's well over 1,000. As you can see, it's left out all day. This is what's supposed to be the barrier. A third-world city in a third-world country would at least put a barrier up which is meaningful. That is not meaningful, and it's not safe. When you look at noise and light pollution, I think the photograph on the top left shows it, all of these areas here are front of house, where you've got living arrangements, outside balconies, and master bedrooms. Down below, this is the noise level that was put in for one property to the other, where ex- we're exceeding that in several areas at the moment. Noise and light pollution are a significant part of the issue here. You also, in terms of the parking, this is right outside Trenta, right at peak time, where you've got vehicles parked in the middle of the building. This is, this is an industrial zone. It's not an area for a restaurant that wants to take over the whole plaza. This is food pickup, just been abandoned on Superior, major thoroughfare, put lights on, run and get food, did a full U-turn. Supposedly, there is no operation of a valet there today. The valet is supposed to be professional, well-trained, they're using their own staff to do it. In terms of this, if you look at where Beach Cities is versus where the restaurant is, a vehicle goes on and off, goes in-parked, and has to come back down there. That's six movements every vehicle that stays there. You've only got to have 30, and you actually go over the number of peak-time movements that are in the traffic plan, which is 161. And again, I went back and checked all of that through. This is the number, if you look here, it's 161 trips that were peak. It's about 1,500 trips all day. So you've got a situation where we're creating an animal that will continue to grow and will continue to cause problems in that area. Again, this is all of the original planning requirements. In summary, before we go to a couple of videos to try and keep it tight, we've basically got proprietors who are today ignoring that commission ruling. They operate fully during the lunchtime hours without any parking mitigation plan. There is no parking mitigation plan, as I understand it from Scott Drapman, in place for the evenings today. So council has to decide if they want proprietors who will follow the rules as being dictated by the planning commission or not. We've now got, I believe, an added event center, more indoor dining, that's being utilized, and you'll see a video with the noise it creates. As I said, all other restaurants in the area that went onto a temporary use permit didn't get an extension in November till 2023. They've all gone back inside, whether in Costa Mesa or Newport Beach. This is purely leveraging a TUP to save going through true planning commission, which would not be given, given the basis of this. And as I said, there are restaurants nearby available. Could we just show a couple of videos, please? This one, unfortunately, the volume's not great, but it's Mr. Sent Turk. I don't know if the volume's even on, is it? Is it? Sent the Turk who lives over in Superior sent communication regarding noise from debris, glass being broken, et cetera, that tape had it. This is the parking area and the houses which are impacted by this structure of Beach Cities. There are people in there with children that can't get to sleep in the evening, and then can we do the next one, please? This is what the reality of this plaza is today for the residents of West Seventeenth. That was 11:00 in the morning.
Excuse me, on, on, can we stop that for a second?
That was alcohol being sold.
I don't, I don't wanna interrupt, but that looks like it's a, it's an event at next door.
That is at the event center, which I believe, who owns the event center? It's the same plaza, it's the same parking requirement.
I know, but is it in an event next door or not?
It was the restaurant as well, if you look at it. The videos are there, you can review them.
Okay, thank you.
Owned by the same people. Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening. My name is Marco Palazzo, and I am one of the two owners of Trenta Pizza Cucina. First of all, I would like to say thank you to all the members of the city council, the city manager, the mayor. I know you're really busy people, and we really appreciate your, your hard work. I would also like to thank the members of the planning commission who already approved our application back in September 12. That decision was appealed by one person, one person, one single person, one single resident, not by a group, not by Seventeen West community, which we know for a fact loves Trenta. For those who are not familiar with Trenta, I would like to briefly sum up our wonderful journey. My good friend Giorgio and I decided to open a pizzeria in Costa Mesa because we love pizza, we love food. We brought in family recipe and our favorite pizza dough recipe back from Sicily, and we put all our savings in this project to share all this with you. Trenta opened it back in February 2019, and after one year and one month of operation, we got so scared because of the pandemic. But I can tell you that back in March 2020, we realized how important it is to be supported by a beautiful community like Costa Mesa and Newport. The real family, the family really saved our business. Thank to all of you. Thank to the help of our community, we did not lay off one employee, and we're, and we're so proud of that. We're a small family business, we don't consider employees a number, but a person, a person with family and kids. We're talking a lot about numbers and codes, we talk about people. We're here today in front of the city council because our approved application for feminine patio and valet parking was appealed. The appellant, a previous customer of Trenta, who used to, who used to come, sorry, who used to come to our restaurant with his wife on a weekly basis, is saying that our restaurant produced noise and light pollution for nearby residences. Truth to be told, the appellant residence is not close to the restaurant, like many other residents, that they have their balcony and windows literally above the restaurant, who never, ever experienced any noise or light pollution. We heard from our customers that the appellant spent the last two months trying to recruit support to this motion, with those pictures that we saw in here, trying to get people to go against our application. Now, the appellant that I like now to call by the name Chris Riley, because we know Chris Riley very well, he was coming every single week to the restaurant with his lovely wife Stephanie. And Stephanie is the only reason why we did not start refusing service to this person's not to embarrass the wife. Because since his first visit to our restaurant, Chris Riley has been rude with our staff, with myself, and with my partner. In more than one occasion, we felt extremely uncomfortable from his words and actions. And I prefer not to get into the details. This appeal is baseless. This is a personal vendetta from this granted customer. I request that you vote to support the planning commission approval of the extended patio and valet parking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, now we're gonna, hold on one second. We're gonna open up to public comment, and we'll take the comment from inside the chambers first. And it would be more efficient if, if multiple people are gonna talk, is if you line up on either side of the podiums, and then you'll have three minutes within which to talk. You get a, two minutes, you get a ding that lets you know you have a minute left. And then, but Giorgio, I mean, you're, are you, are you gonna talk in public comment? Okay. So, so you don't have to take your whole three minutes, so if you feel like things are being repetitive and you wanna be very brief, that would be very much appreciated by the council. So with that, Giorgio, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council. So just a few words, really, I wanna thank you for your time tonight for us, I wanna just briefly say what's kind of unique establishment is Trenta and what, how changed the community in that area. So I'm talking right now not for the really motion of the appealing, of the appeal, but just for the, how much Trenta did for the community, for the, for all the area, how changed, and how it's changing with the new residency behind us, of course. Once we get the, we opened the restaurant, it was not even open behind the West Seventeenth, so it was not even a problem. But honestly, according to the people that came out to support and how many email you received from our supporter, probably we did a good job in the last four years, that's what I wanna say. And the focal point is how much the community is growing, and so having a support services for the community like our restaurant will be important for the city. City is growing, growing, the community is growing, you gotta consider, of course, the Superior is important, the west part of Costa Mesa is an important area, is developing a lot, so we need your support as services, and we need your support to, as a guide, to do the right things, of course. But I don't think we ever lower the, the value of the, of the community. Actually, regarding West Seventeenth, probably even the house values, it went up thanks to the restaurant, because people look for services around their house where they wanna build their life in. So rather have a restaurant that been abandoned in the area at 6:00 p.m. because it's an industrial area, so it was abandoned before. Now we have action, we have some movement, we have people coming and find us. We are not loud, we are a family restaurant. We don't do nightclub, we don't do music out, we don't have extremely loud, we have bistrot light and some heater lamps outside. So the images you see last time, it was not us, it was our neighbor was doing a private party, and we mentioned to them, please not to do so, because we care about our community. We try to listen to all our friends that lives behind us. Of course, regarding the valet, I think that the valet can help actually for security, because they, they're gonna regulate it so much better, how is the, the movement to cars, stop in front of our restaurant, and then our valet guys is gonna, they're gonna go and park the car. So the noise will be, of course, controlled. And last things last, it's, for safety reasons, it was mentioned before, I was saying that the condition was, it was a TUP condition, so we didn't put a barrier, or we didn't put shields yet, or fences yet, because it was a temporary use of permit. If it will be confirmed tonight, we're gonna provide more security for our patrons that are assisting to our restaurants. Thank you very much, Apollyonides.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, council. Mark Foksevich here. So I wanna quickly acknowledge at the front, I've never been to Trenta, I'm not affiliated with Trenta, I have no investments related to Trenta, but I'd like to go to Trenta, I hear great things about their pizza. I, I just wanna say that I, I find this kind of whole process absurd and like, kind of ridiculous on a, on a governmental process level, on a what we wanna do to our small businesses level. What about the parking? What about the carbon monoxide? What about the propane explosions? What about someone yelling like it's Goethe Hill Tavern outside? Why is this at city council? Why does this even go in a planning commission? This should be a conversation between the tenant and the, and the landlord. I really don't think this is like something we should be doing to our small businesses, to like, have them go through this process, to have them bring staff members and friends and family here. If there's, if there's a noise issue, that's a code enforcement or a PD issue. I, I don't really see, like, this is not actually fostering a good small business environment in Costa Mesa. Like, don't even get me started on the parking. Like, parking, this shared demand parking calculator is a pseudoscience, and that's, that's straight from the mouth of people who study parking themselves. Why don't we let our small businesses in Costa Mesa figure out what's best for them and not have this like asinine process where we're like, forcing small businesses to go through this process? Because that's not gonna keep these Michelin-starred restaurants in Costa Mesa, that's not gonna keep our wonderful business environment. So not only should I, I wanna encourage council to vote yes on this, I would encourage council to reform the process where we, like, planning commission, and you all need to touch every little bit of the process for small businesses, and actually like, let our small businesses prosper, you know, prosper and thrive, because I, I didn't find, I don't find this fruitful, this discussion fruitful tonight personally, and I don't think it's good for our small business environment, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Colin Carter. My wife and I live in Superior Point on Channel Way. We, our windows directly face Trenta, and we have them open most of the year. We've never had any problems remotely with noise or light pollution. Those pictures that I saw, the lights, actually, like he said, they're bistrot lighting, they shine down, they don't shine up into the buildings at all. Of all the businesses in the area, they've been most respectful to the neighborhood since day one. We've been there since before they were open, so they've done nothing but create a great sense of community and made it a better neighborhood to live in.
Thanks.
So, yeah.
Hello, good evening, I'm Stan Hatch. I'm 25-year homeowner in Costa Mesa, I live on Orange Avenue. I actually walked to Trenta last night, as I do probably once every two weeks. There is a bike rack there, just in case, you know, I've ridden my bike there also. My compliments to adapting the codes through conditional use permits and things to make our city a lot more livable.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Davis, and we are the interior design firm that is right next to Trenta. We have been in business for 20 years, we've been at that location for 10 years. Prior to Trenta, there was actually a car smogging facility where they are, which, believe me, was extremely noisy and extremely produced a lot of pollution. But since Trenta came in, it is such a wonderful addition to our community. It has helped our business next door, it's helped the bicycle business across the way. All of us love each other, we work together, we have no issues with parking, and it's just the most wonderful, warm community experience there. And there is absolutely nothing but positive goodness about Trenta. And regarding parking, it's not an issue because they are so courteous, and we all work together, and valet parking can only make the process smoother and make the experience even more wonderful. And the last thing I would like to point out is prior to Trenta being there, our business was there late at night, we worked till 11:00, we're a design firm, quite often. And it was scary out there, it was dark, there was people wandering around, there were drug transactions, there was all sorts of things. Trenta moved in, we moved in, we turned this into beautiful, beautiful little like, community shopping area and eating area, and everything is totally transformed. So all I could say is this has been such a wonderful addition to the community, and again, I agree, it's, it would be ridiculous to even consider like, taking any of this away from Trenta, because they're absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. Oh, you wanna, you wanna finish and then we'll go, we'll go to the, yeah.
Yeah, I'm an employee of Davis's, and Trenta is our neighbor, and I just wanna say, as a female and full, our whole staff is a group of females, we feel extremely safe daily because Trenta's constantly busy, we have a ton of people around, and they really make us feel a lot safer. I worked there prior to Trenta being there, and honestly, like Davis said, it was quite scary at nighttime, so we really do try and time our arrival and departure on Trenta, and we appreciate, you know, having them there.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I know it's all about brevity, right? You have a really full schedule, so, look, I'm one of the residents that lives off of 16th Street. They have been an amazing addition to West Side Costa Mesa. And if you understand West Side Costa Mesa, it is not the most hospitable place for restaurants, right? You know, I have a 19-month-old, 20-month-old son that, that my wife and I walk from 16th Street along Superior Avenue about once a week to go to have dinner there. Look, there's never been a time that, that Giorgio Marco, the staff, and everyone there has been anything less, less than polite and kind and friendly in a way that realistically you don't see in a lot of restaurants. You know, I think Costa Mesa is so much stronger for having a business like that there. Giorgio and Marco are great people, the people that work there are great, and, and West Side Costa Mesa is just, is so much better for having them. So, you know, look, it really is disconcerting to me that a business has worked so hard to play by the rules, it's a story of immigration, it's a story of bringing your best to our country and creating something from nothing, that it was able to be subjected to, to the whims of somebody who's obviously had a run-in with the owner that, that didn't work out, right? We haven't really seen one person step up, we haven't seen a group, and I think, you know, please just take that into consideration, and know that we truly love this business and we want it to thrive. So anything you can do to make that, that help, we really appreciate it. But you all have a nice evening and a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you so much.
Hi there, folks. My name's Jagger. I do not work at Trenta, however, I just- I do not work at Trenta, however, I just talked to the manager about getting a serving position. That's in the works. That's in the works. However, I am their biggest fan and I don't have too much to say other than this is the type of place that I have actually bought a lot of merchandise from, as you can see. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else from the council, sorry, the chambers. Will you have one more person? That's fine. Yeah, you can go to either podium.
My name is Alex Schopperstein. Me, my wife and two boys recently moved a year ago to Costa Mesa. And we, first of the restaurants that we attended was Trenta and we loved it. We enjoyed the delicious Italian food and friendly atmosphere with an excellent service which we provide, Trenta provides to its customers. The outdoor ceiling is an essential way to offer diners a chance to have a mental vacation from their usual surroundings. One can relax on wind, on the fresh air and head back to work or home with a natural mood boost. Also, valet parking is a great way not to worry where to park your car since parking in the area might be difficult to find. Please, we ask you to grant a very needed outside patio seating and valet parking to Trenta Pizzeria so we can continue to enjoy our favorite restaurant. Thank you very much.
Okay. We're good, we're good in the chambers. On Zoom, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishes to speak?
Yes, we have several speakers.
Oh, several speakers.
The first one is MT, please.
MT, you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Melissa and me and my husband have lived in the Seventeen West area for three and a half years and we actually live in one of the condos directly behind Trenta that was shown in one of the pictures from the appellant. And I just want to say we love the vibrancy and sense of community this restaurant has brought and love that we can walk over to dine there with our other community members. And for context, the individual who appealed this approval lives in an interior unit. And again, we live where my living room and bedroom windows overlook Trenta. And from a noise standpoint, you know, I work from home and my bedroom window is faced down at Trenta. And again, we sleep with our windows open frequently and we don't hear any additional noise from Trenta. The only thing you hear is the regular car movement on Superior. And with context of this, we typically go to bed around nine. And in terms of light pollution as well, Superior in general is already well lit. This does not, Trenta does not add to any light pollution. In terms of the valet and parking expansion, we think it's actually a really great solution to ensure patrons don't park in Seventeen West. It'll be safer because it will be more controlled. And the last thing is too, in terms of property values, we feel that having a vibrant, a vibrant and thriving restaurant like Trenta has helped bring people to the area and increase property values. And people who buy these types of condos typically want to live in an area where they can walk to an amazing restaurant or coffee shop that has a strong sense of community. And I'm actually very concerned that if Trenta moved or wasn't allowed to expand, then it would negatively impact our property values and the community because now that area would be more deserted, like others had mentioned, and likely become another congregation for homeless or whatever it may be. And so after seeing Boathouse Collective not make it through the pandemic, I wanted to ensure we support our local businesses that contribute to a thriving and bright community like Trenta does. We have so few restaurants right nearby and I think Trenta does a superb job of being very respectful and welcoming to the nearby residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Vigil, please.
You have the floor.
Hi there. My name is Ben V. Hill. I'm a resident of Seventeen West. I've been going to Trenta for, geez, already four years now, or three, three years now, three, three years. We walk there sometimes three times a week. It's an amazing addition to our neighborhood, to our community. We all love it. All of our neighbors, we go there often, actually usually together. It's really great to have Giorgio and Marco near us. They're an excellent part of our community. The appellant mentioned something about the fire truck, not being able to enter the community. A while back, there was an incident where we had to call the fire department and the fire truck made it in here fine and they saved us. It was great. So I'm not so sure what's going on there, but that's, that's definitely not true. Well, nonetheless, we love Trenta, Trenta's a part of our community and a part of our family. So thank you so much, Marco and Giorgio.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, no further speakers.
Oh, okay. Close, a public comment, no wait, we're not going to close public comment technically. We're going to, we're going to invite either the applicant or the appellant to come up if they wish to rebut anything that was said in the public comment. They don't have to, but this is their opportunity to do that. Okay? So I don't see them getting up. Yes, the appellant wants to get up and say something, you're welcome to do so. And it's just to rebut items that were brought up. Sir, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council members again. This isn't a popularity contest, it's an application of planning rules. It's about safety and about people's safety, that's what you're voting on. I'd also clarify that if you vote on this, you're not voting for the extension that Trenta believes they're getting. There is no extension at lunchtime in this. It is back to 2:45, internal only, with valet parking, parking mitigation. They don't understand what is being proposed by the planning commission and they therefore have continually ignored it and put a thousand-square-foot area out continuously. I'm not going to give any value to the personal attack, I don't care about it. We're actually involved in an action with CP at the moment, Costa Mesa Police Department. Again, it is not a popularity contest, it is an application of the commission's decision. And if you go through that, they're not doing that today and they have no intention of doing it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to say anything in rebuttal? No? Oh, do you wish to say something? You don't have to, but you're welcome to.
I don't want to add anything else. I think we all understand the situation here.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, now, now the public comment area, public hearing is, comment part of the hearing is closed. And at this point, I will entertain a motion. I think we have to clear the, it's got the old motion on our screen, at least mine does. The old item.
It's a current motion.
It's a current motion.
This is a current motion? Okay. And it said, but it says item?
Yes, the item is incorrect because the items got switched.
The item is incorrect. So, so when it, where it says motion made by and seconded by Reynolds and Marr, that's the, that was this motion, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the computer program got switched.
Okay, that's good.
On these two items.
So Councilmember Reynolds, what is your motion?
I move that we uphold Planning Commission's decision, accept staff recommendation with a minor modification to condition of approval number 16 to prohibit slamming of doors by the valet operator and require the operator to first utilize parking furthest from the residences.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Marr. Councilmember Reynolds, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I agree that this, you know, shouldn't come before us usually. I think it's important to have the appeal process for our residents when they, when they choose to use it. But I'm happy to support the motion and happy to support Trenta's work and service in this community. I want to share some of the things I'm, I like about this project and how Trenta has evolved. Outdoor dining, we've talked a lot about on the council dais. Costa Masons love outdoor dining, we want to see more outdoor dining. We extended our outdoor dining ordinance or temporary ordinance for another year to work on a permanent ordinance, right? This is something that we're moving towards in Costa Mesa because people love it. And I thought some of the points made from our speakers were, we're really good about activating some of these spaces, especially at night in this community where it's for a long time been very quiet and dormant, which has allowed maybe unsafe practices to occur. So I hadn't thought of that before, but I do think it's actually a really positive safety measure as well. I really like shared parking strategies. One of the things that's, that's hurt our small businesses in the past, or all businesses in the past, is, you know, individual parking requirements. And I think the better we utilize shared parking strategies, the more interesting things we can do with our spaces. So I really like that, that part of it. Good food is great, we love good food in Costa Mesa. Restaurants that serve good food and unique food, we want to see more of. And I love that this restaurant is so local serving, hearing that people walk and bike are regular customers is a really good thing for Costa Mesa. I was recently at a work event and talking with someone from North San Diego County and I mentioned I live in Costa Mesa and he said, "Do you know Trenta?" Right? Like this is all so regional and it's, it's so great. We love, it's part of our economic development strategies to, to be this center for great food in not just Orange County, but I guess outside of Orange County as well. So, so many good things that I think really work well for Costa Mesa, that are an important part of us evolving as a city and really work well for, for this part of West Side Costa Mesa. So proud to support this and eager to go to Trenta. I haven't been there in a while. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem, do you have anything to add?
Yes, just that this is making me hungry because I would also like to go to Trenta. You know, I think this actually hits on a lot of things that we need to do. So we've got some work to do to modernize our own code. I believe, you're correct, this shouldn't come before Council, Mr. Vuksevich, because we need to change some of our existing parking policies to make it much easier for small businesses to do the shared parking that Councilmember Reynolds was talking about. We've all expressed a desire to continue making permanent outdoor dining and if anything, making it easier to take over parking spots in favor of outdoor dining because that, that is fundamentally what we'd all like to see more of. And the last one, at least, I'll also say, we don't have a mixed-use code right now. We don't actually set up our planning such that we can do residential right by great restaurants, right by coffee shops. That's just, that's not some, how Costa Mesa has traditionally operated up until this point. But that's also due to the fact that a lot of our existing codes haven't really been significantly overhauled in the last 30 years. And so I think that there's tons of opportunity to really use this as a case study of this is a business that we want, it is clearly beloved, and maybe it's our rules that need fixing more than anything else. Thank you.
Do any of the other council members wish to say anything? Okay, no? All right, I just want to say a couple things. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Harper, go ahead. So, I think, you know, I do like this process and the fact that if you had been denied in the planning commission, you had this to come to and present your case. And while the code doesn't seem to fit right now or our regulations, this has been a good representation of what the community wants as far as a restaurant. Councilmember Reynolds, this is a question and comment. Should we, do you have any concerns about the barriers between the parking and the patrons and there's, they're temporary on wheels? And so I just wanted you to consider that in your motion. You probably know more about them than I do, so if you'd consider that, I'd appreciate it. Or if there's something we need to change about the motion that includes that. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to respond?
No, not, not if you want to.
I'll just mention that I'm not going to modify the motion. I know that for the temporary permits, our, our staff review it, so our fire teams out there, public works teams out there. So the sort of safety piece is already considered. Thanks. Yep.
Okay, for my part, it's a pretty straightforward decision. It's a really fine restaurant, great addition to the community on the west side, really continues with the theme of the culinary arts. It employs high school students. It's really just a great story and a beautiful place to be and I've listened to everybody. I will say one thing, because I have to say this, is for anybody else who wants to ever make an application or ever make an appeal, do not put a video about some other property and put it in front of the council and pass it off as the applicant's property. That, that is not good for the credibility of the applicant or the appellant as the case may be and it will never get my vote. Call for the question.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right, thank you very much. So we, we're back from our recess, we're all the way to item number, public hearing number three. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Thank you. This is approval of general plan amendment 21-01 for City of Costa Mesa 2021-2029 Six Cycle Housing Element Update as Revised and Adoption of a Resolution to Overrule the Inconsistency Determination Made by the Airport Land Use Commission for Orange County for the City of Costa Mesa 2021-2029 Six Cycle Housing Element Update. Staff presentation by Ms. Lee, Director of Economic and Development Services. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The item before you is the 2021-2029 Six Cycle Housing Element Update as Revised, as well as consideration of an overrule of the Airport Land Use Commission's inconsistency determination. Just a brief background, the housing element again is one of the seven required elements or chapters of the city's comprehensive general plan. The housing element includes an analysis of the city's demographics, economic and housing characteristics, it identifies community housing needs, and it establishes objectives, policies and programs to meet those needs. Always an important component of any housing element update is community outreach. I'll discuss briefly some of the city's past actions on that front. And also, the housing element as it is a chapter of the general plan is required to be approved by the city council and it's the only element that's required to be certified by the state and that is the California Department of Housing and Community Development, which we commonly refer to as HCD. This table should look familiar to you as well. One of the major requirements of the housing element is that it requires the city to plan and zone to facilitate housing production that meets the city's regional housing needs allocation or RENA. The city's RENA allocation is 11,760 units and it was allocated to the city by the state through the Southern California Association of Governments. I wanted to go through a brief timeline before I get into the specific proposed revisions in the housing element. We kicked off the housing element update process back in mid-2020 when we released an RFP and approved a contract for the city's housing element consultant, Kim Lee Horn. Shortly after, we began our community outreach process in November 2020 with a town hall meeting to introduce the process of the housing element and some of the fundamentals. We progressed to district-specific virtual meetings in February of 2021. The city council and planning commission had a joint study session in April of 2021. The draft housing element was prepared and released to the public in August of 2021. And in September, there was a town hall meeting, a second city council and planning commission joint study session to review that draft housing element. In October, we released the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the housing element. There was the discussion information of the housing ad hoc committee in October and the staff submitted the draft housing element to the state shortly after that council study session and the state returned a comment letter to the city in December. The city's planning commission held three public hearings in November and December of 2021. And again, in January 2022, the city council housing ad hoc committee held a public study session and also the city council considered for the first time adoption of the housing element in January. element in January. In February, the council reviewed and considered public comments, as well as the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and adopted the housing element for submittal to HCD. Staff submitted that housing element shortly after. We received an HCD comment letter in April advising the city that further revisions were going to be required to the state in order to receive state certification. And in between receiving that letter and tonight's hearing, staff have had continued discussions with HCD staff as to the specific revisions that are necessary in order to achieve state certification of our next submittal. In terms of next steps, should the council decide to adopt the housing element this evening as revised, staff would submit the housing element for HCD certification, and we would expect that certification in January. The housing element revisions that are before you this evening are an amendment to the housing element that was adopted by the council in February of this year, and the revisions were crafted specifically to respond to the state HCD's April comment letter, and specifically respond in a manner that we believe will gain their certification. I'm not going to go through every specific revision. I'm going to summarize at a high level the revisions that are proposed to the adopted housing element. The details are described in the staff report, and there is a tracked changes version of all the revisions that were made to the housing element that is included as an attachment to the staff report and was also posted online on the city's website a week ago. So in summary, the recommended revisions include additional supporting data, analysis, and clarifications, and those are regarding our housing needs, resources, and constraints, and it also includes new and modified housing programs. I want to stress that the revisions do not modify the city's fundamental approach to housing element compliance, or RENA compliance. It does not change these previously discussed corridors or the housing opportunity sites that were previously identified, and it does continue to meet the city's RENA obligation. In response to state HCD's comment letter, the housing element as revised includes an additional analysis and expanded programs related to extremely low-income households, and specifically includes additional information regarding affirmatively furthering fair Additional information was also added regarding development trends and some more specifics on housing opportunity sites as requested, and it also includes new programs pertaining to small and large housing sites. For example, Program 3Q pertains to lot consolidation and commits the city to streamline processes and establish incentives for lot consolidation of smaller housing opportunity sites. Program 3R pertains to development of large sites and requires the city to evaluate the development status of large housing opportunity sites, and if needed, identify additional housing sites in the future. In response to state comments, the projected number of ADU production has been reduced, and ADU programs have been expanded to promote the development of ADUs and also to establish a monitoring program for ADU development. Additional analysis and programs were added regarding the city's code-required findings for residential projects, that's Program 3S, and additional information regarding emergency shelters and programs regarding permanent supportive of housing were also added. Additional information and programs were added regarding the reasonable accommodation procedures and definition of single housekeeping unit, as well as group home regulations, were also added as programs. And lastly, modifications to housing element programs 3B pertaining to the Fairview Development Center, 3C, and 3D related to required rezoning, and Program 3G related to the citywide vote requirement were also modified in this round of housing element revisions. Program 3B regarding the Fairview Development Center was modified to clarify the city's intent to facilitate development at the Fairview Development Center property and to update the status of the city's activities related to that site. And Program 3G was modified to add a specific course of action in the event that there was a shortfall of sites following implementation of the specific milestones and timelines that the city had previously identified at the request of the state. In addition to considering adoption of the housing element as revised, the council is also being asked to overrule the Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency for the housing element. As you may recall, on April 5, 2022, the council previously made findings that the proposed housing element is consistent with the applicable airport land use plan, and that is pursuant to Public Utilities Code Section 21676, and staff notified the Airport Land Use Commission of its intent to overrule their determination. In response to the Airport Land Use Commission's comments, which were primarily related to noise and safety, I want to note that the Airport Land Use Commission acknowledged that the city's general plan noise element already adequately addresses the interface of potential residential development and airport noise. Regarding safety, the housing element does not propose changes to the height standards that were already approved for the North Costa Mesa specific plan area or buildings that are already developed at those heights in that area. So with that, staff recommends this evening that the council find that the previously approved initial study mitigating negative declaration is sufficient for CEQA compliance purposes, and finds that no further action is required to comply with CEQA, to approve the resolution to overrule the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission's March 17, 2022 determination regarding the housing element, and to approve the resolution approving the City of Costa Mesa 2021-2029 Six Cycle Housing Element as Revised and presented this evening. And lastly, to direct the city manager designate to submit that housing element to the state and to authorize the city manager designate to make minor revisions necessary to obtain state certification. That concludes my presentation this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Lee? I don't see anybody with questions. Okay, let's open it up to public. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Harland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lee, either you or Ms. Barlow, can you explain a little bit? I guess the first question is, were the revised housing element that's before us tonight, you believe that will get us to certification by HCD, correct?
Yes, I do. We've gone through, I'll say, painstaking lengths to communicate with HCD staff as to exactly what revisions to this housing element would be necessary to respond to their specific comments in their April comment letter and to receive certification. So, yes.
Okay. And so I know there have been some questions raised by the public, especially in the last several months, that things have changed within the landscape for housing elements. Can you or Ms. Barlow explain the legislative changes that have occurred in interim? Not in any great detail, just I think the public needs to understand, we've been going through this process, there have been some changes requested by HCD, there's been some legislative changes, how that's impacted our, what we've got today, and then what does that mean for us moving forward after certification?
So I'll start. One of the significant legislative changes was that while we were in the middle of this process, and within the period of time where we could meet the deadline for certification, the legislature passed a bill that actually changed the law midstream and essentially put us past the deadline, even though we were not past the deadline, to put it simply. There also have been a significant number of other bills that have had to be looked at and incorporated, addressed. Indeed, since the discussions with HCD and our first submission, we've had the new bills, SB 9 and some others, that have passed that haven't even been taken into account yet. You may want to address the legislative changes that you've talked to HCD about.
So staff has had many conversations with the HCD about the many legislative changes and really new legislation that has come down from the state related to housing and land use and zoning in particular. Some conversations that we had with the state back in, a few months ago by now, were really related to the fact that some of the legislation passed changed the deadlines for housing elements, such that although the city was going through the process of making its revisions and working with HCD actively to ensure that our revised housing element was going to be certified in this round, at the same time, there was legislation and communications coming from HCD essentially notifying staff that they had a very short timeframe to submit a housing element or be past these changed deadlines, as our city attorney has said. So essentially, where we are now is that we've worked extensively with HCD over the past several months to ensure that our revisions are something that we're confident that they are going to certify, at least based on our communications with them. We expect, if the council adopts this housing element this evening, that we'll submit it to the state. The state will have 60 days to respond to us, and we expect certification in January.
Okay. And so my last question is that, my understanding is there's been very few cities that have gotten certification in Orange County to begin with. Right now, I suspect we are in the same boat as many other cities.
We are. And a lot of cities in Orange County are coordinating about their experiences with this changed state legislation sort of midstream, and their interactions with HCD and getting an approved housing element by the deadlines that are, seem to be constantly changing. So at this point of February of this year, there were no Orange County cities that had certified housing elements, and there are still roughly two-thirds of Orange County cities that do not have certified housing elements.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, thank you. One question. So the housing element as originally written, as revised, has lots of different programs, right? Lots of strategies that we've looked at and talked about, and obviously think are important. What is our process for moving forward on those programs? Like, how do we, when are we going to set a schedule for when we start on each one? How do we look at how we're going to sequence them? What is our process for laying out for ourselves and for the public and making sure that we have the resources to be able to implement those programs?
I think the important thing to remember, as well as that a lot of the housing element programs have specifically relate to our requirement to rezone certain sites, housing opportunity sites within Costa Mesa, so we'll be prioritizing those actions and just overall comprehensive updates of community plans and urban plans. That'll be one of our top priorities, because it is a long process, and we want to ensure that we have an appropriate amount of time to do community outreach and all of the things that are involved with good community planning. So we want to start that in earnest. But really, there are over 47 programs that are listed in this housing element. Those are to be implemented within an eight-year planning period, but the majority of them are to be completed within a two-to-three-year period. So you can imagine that that is likely to be a very heavy workload for staff. Our process of prioritizing which actions, each housing element program has a timeline associated with it, so our internal process is essentially, we have different planning sections in our department, and we will be allocating staff to essentially be prioritizing and planning for implementation of each one of these within the timelines that we've allowed. Where additional resources or consultant resources in some instances are required, we'll be moving forward with RFPs to bring those contract folks on board to complete these programs on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's open it up to public comment. Don't all rush to the podiums at once. Do we have somebody coming to the podium? Mr. Humphrey? A few.
Thank you for your patience.
You have the floor.
Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I actually only have one question, and you've attempted to answer it out front, and that's why this meeting didn't happen six weeks ago. And I still don't understand it. It's smoke and mirrors to me. We could meet the deadline, but pass the deadline, but not pass the deadline per the city attorney. I don't know what any of that stuff means. I don't know why we've got another six weeks into this issue when we could have been, when I read the document, it seems like it was all pretty much done prior to the actual deadline, and I don't know why this meeting, that you have to certify it, you have to do your part of it, why it didn't happen six weeks ago, or something like that. So that's my question. That's been my question from the start, of why the delay to this point. It's just interesting, it's passed the election by one week, and I wonder if that had any impact on the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm on a different side, so. Good evening, council and staff. My name's Jen Tanaka, I'm a Costa Mesa resident. I want to first thank the council and the staff for their hard work on this housing element. I know it was a big lift. The staff's report for this item states not adopting the housing element update and not receiving state certification would make the city out of compliance with the state housing element law and would subject the city to potential litigation, other enforcement actions by the state, end quote. I had some questions that I was hoping that staff or the city council can answer. First, is it true that if the council does not adopt the revised housing element tonight, that the city would be out of compliance? As I've discussed in my comments on October 18th, I believe we are already out of compliance. If that's true, the staff report should know that, note that. Second, even if the council adopts this revised housing element and we get a substantial compliance letter from HCD, can HCD certify our housing element without the city completing the rezoning required to implement it? My understanding is that since we missed the October 15th deadline, we cannot gain compliance without rezoning, and if that is correct, I think the staff report should say that. Third, what are the consequences if HCD won't certify our housing element because of that? The agenda, again, states that we may be subject to potential litigation, other enforcement action, is substantial compliance enough to avoid that, or do we need certification? And additionally, the revised housing element states that it could take until June 2025 to get an opinion from the Attorney General in the event that Measure K fails. So it seems that we would be unable to get state certification until that's ironed out, if that's correct? Shouldn't the report lay out the penalties, fees, and remedies that we'd be subject to in the meantime, so that the council can be prepared for their impacts? And fourth, have any of these penalties, have any of them already been assessed? Have any builder's remedy projects been submitted? And if nothing has been assessed or submitted, will staff be keeping the council and the public up to date regarding these penalties and applications as they arise? I think they should. The last phase of our housing policy was criticized as being, leaving a lot to be desired in terms of transparency and public engagement. Now with the election over, I challenge the council and the staff to keep the public involved and informed in this next phase. That starts with being clear about where we are and where we need to be, and what the proposal is moving forward. And unfortunately, I believe this agenda report still leaves a lot left to be desired. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joanne Perler, I'm a citizen, Costa Mesa. I have actually the same question Jay did. He was more eloquent than I could be, is why is this meeting taking place now and not sooner? I'm very confused. I don't have my notes complete, I left a little bit at home, but that there was a filing that didn't take place, so instead of having a two-and-a-half-year extension with the state to complete this plan, you no longer have any avenue or room to work on this, and I kind of don't understand how that happened. And it's interesting what we're learning about this after the election has taken place. I worked very hard on Measure Y. That's why I'm here, I have been here for two or three years. And Measure Y really talked about having the citizens involved in voting for major changes to the general plan. And it's pretty obvious to me that that is a step or And it's pretty obvious to me that that is a step or a series of steps that's way too much for you to contemplate. You really don't want to put that kind of trust in the citizens, which is also interesting since this council has put themselves up as Democrats. And I would really like to see you giving some respect to Measure Y of the amount of the yards percentage by which it was passed, and Measure K to know is being that right now is pretty far ahead, and this is with virtually no organization against it. Measure Y had a pretty strong organization for it. And I would really like to see some respect for the citizens, some feeling that we have the intelligence to take a look at changes, major changes to zoning, and help make decisions with it. That's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you. So I don't see anybody else in the chambers that wishes to speak. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak?
Yes, Cynthia McDonald, please.
Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. If you learn nothing else from this election, I hope you learned that planning of our city is important to the voters. As of today, more than 1,100 voters cast ballots in the Measure K race than they did in the mayoral race. Because we must reach a consensus on amendments to our general plan with respect to zoning changes needed to conform the housing element, it is critical that the city engage the residents in a visioning effort. Failure to do that will likely lead to a list that will negatively impact the city. With respect to that effort, staff had contemplated an effort at community visioning. The city obtained a $500,000 leap grant. Does the city still have those funds? If not, were the funds spent elsewhere? If so, how were they spent and what was achieved? In April 2021, the city indicated it was going to appoint a citizen advisory committee on Measure Y. When will this be convened? If it won't be convened, why not? If it is, it should be a program in housing element. Earlier this evening, we heard people speak on the subject of affordable housing and glad to see a timeline for adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance. But let's be clear, the city council can act on this alone. There is no vote of the people required. In the housing element, we see that our ordinance exempts 100% affordable housing developments from the voter approval requirement. However, that fact is buried in one of the appendices. I request that when the city submits the revised housing element to the HCD, it point that out so the HCD doesn't have to go digging like I did. The city intends to increase the zoning of many of the specific plans, urban plans, and overlays. Will the density of the sites on the site inventory in those areas be increased? Or will all the parcels in the areas be increased? I do see that the North Costa Mesa specific plan will be rezoned to 90 dwelling units per acre, and so BECA's parcels will all be changed to 60 dwelling units per acre, and the Harbor mixed-use overlays parcels will all be changed to 50 dwelling units per acre. It states that the city intends to increase the boundary of the North Costa Mesa specific plan. Will that increase include One Metro West? Will other specific plans, urban plans, and overlay areas have their boundaries increased? About all the parcels in the 19 West Urban Plan, will they go to 50 dwelling units per acre? And in the Mesa West Bluff Urban Plan, will they all increase to 40 dwelling units per acre? There are other questions in the letter I've sent, but I'm probably running out of time. I'd appreciate answers to those questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. You hit it right on the button. Anybody else?
No, Mayor, Ms.
All right, let's close public comment. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Approve staff recommendation?
Motion to approve staff recommendation that's seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Councilmember Chavez, do you wish to speak on your motion?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds, do you have anything to say on behalf of the second?
Another time.
Okay, good. Do any other council members wish to speak on this item? Okay, then let's call for the question.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Harper voting no.
Okay, let's move on to new business item number one.
Item number one is approval amendment to citywide rental assistance program with Mercy House funded by the American Rescue Plan. Staff presentation by Mr. Robbins, neighborhood improvement manager.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is the Costa Mesa Rental Assistance Program. So I'll give you some background first. In October 2020 and June 2021, city council allocated over $900,000 for rental assistance and CDBGC COVID funds to develop an eviction prevention program. That money was given to Mercy House, Spin, and Families Forward, and through that funding and through the amazing work of their staff, they were able to assist over 275 people with rental assistance to keep them in their homes during the pandemic. Of the 275 people, 72 were assisted by Mercy House alone. And then in November 2020, November 2021, council again allocated a total of $300,000 in home funds to Families Forward to operate a long-term rental assistance program. So the CDBGCV was eviction prevention, and then the home TBRA funds are actually 24 months of rental assistance, so much longer term and more intensive case management, more wraparound services. Families Forward since has assisted a total of 10 families. Their contract actually expired just recently, and it was extended to November of 2023, which by then they'll have all the funds expended and they'll have helped anywhere between 15 and 20 families. So doing amazing work over there at Families Forward. And then, as you all remember, in June, I should actually say June of 2022, sorry about that, council appropriated half a million dollars in ARPA funds to create an augmented rental assistance program. If you all remember, we had some constituent comments about our current programs, and so it was an opportunity to not necessarily go back to the drawing board, but really see what worked and what didn't, and just revamp the whole thing to make it a super solid, amazing rental assistance program for all Costa Mesa residents, individuals, and families. And we'll get into the specifics in a little bit. Here we are. So some of the program highlights, again, this is the new augmented rental assistance program that you're going to hear about now. So the administration of the program is going to include both marketing and outreach by the administrator. Let me back up a little bit. So the conversations that we had with our three current rental assistance providers, Mercy House, Spin, and Families Forward. Mercy House was the provider that was willing to take the funds, that had the capacity to expend the funds, had, of course, the experience in running a prior rental assistance program for the city. So what I'm going to speak about here is through negotiations with Mercy House to see how we could come up with a really amazing program moving forward. So the administration of the program, marketing and outreach, will be conducted both by the city and by Mercy House. Mercy House will have two bilingual staff dedicated to this program, so they'd be able to assist community members that speak both English and Spanish. And then, as we spoke about prior, the application sometimes can be confusing for some residents, so they actually agreed to host an application workshop at the launch of the program where they would have staff onsite. We'd have both Mercy House and city staff onsite to help residents fill out applications, answer any questions that they have about the process of the program in general, and just get people really in tune with what they need to do to be eligible for that program. Speaking of eligibility, the program will assist both individuals and families. If you remember, the last time we had the groups bifurcated between different providers, it created some confusion. That will no longer be the case. Mercy House will be able to assist both individuals and families. We also had an issue with eligibility regarding people that didn't have leases or people that were that had recently been evicted that we weren't necessarily able to help because they didn't have the lease. So this new program is going to be able to assist both literally homeless individuals and families and people at risk of homelessness. So it can keep them in their homes, or it can move them into a brand-new house if they don't have one. And then, as far as eligibility for income, it's 50% AMI. For one person, that's about $47,000 a year, just to give you an idea of what that looks like. The assistance itself or the actual service that the program will provide is rent, of course, future rent, and then arrears, which is past due rent, and then also any kind of moving deposits or fees or anything associated with either moving into a place or fees that had been deferred at one point that are still due. No client will ever pay more than 30% of their adjusted gross income. The other assistance programs that we had were, they varied. So this program's going to be very, it's not going to vary, it's going to be very, you know, pretty easy to understand so that people know that whatever their adjusted gross income is, they can do the calculation, that's what they're going to pay for rent, and then the program will come in and pay for the other 70%. The term of the program is for three months minimum, so once someone is eligible and enrolled into the program, they'll receive a minimum of three months of rental assistance. At the three-month mark, they'll be reassessed just to ensure that they didn't have any potential income increases, and then once that secondary approval's given, they'll get another three months. One of the issues we had with the prior program was that the assistance was for too short of a term, so that it wasn't giving the full security to families that wanted months of security, months of knowing that they're going to have a house, and this new program will do that. And then last, the accomplishments, Mercy House is projecting to assist 150 people or approximately 50 households. It's because they're assisting both individuals and families, families are more expensive to assist, they're bigger units, there's more family members, so it costs more. But this 150 people and 50 households, again, is going to either put households, take them off the street and put them into housing, or it's going to keep families in their housing and away from homelessness. Mercy House will submit monthly, quarterly, and annual reports, and then we'll have monthly meetings with Mercy House to ensure they're on track with all their projected accomplishments. So with all that said, staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed amendment number three to the subrecipient agreement with Mercy House Living Centers, increasing their compensation by $500,000 for a total not-to-exceed amount of an additional $500,000 for program administration of the city's ARPA rental assistance program for lower-income households, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute all agreements and any amendments to the agreements. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you have. And the executive director of Mercy House and proud Costa Mesa resident Larry Haynes is here to answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Yeah, my neighbor. Okay, so any other, any questions for Mr. Robbins or Mr. Haynes? Yes, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, just 50 households does not seem like a lot, right? We know that there's so much need out there. Is this going to be a challenge to, A, either prioritize need, or B, is it a question of folks struggle to find access to these programs, so it's not like they're knocking down our or breaking down our door? Just the outreach component means it's already a limited portion of people who find out about the program.
So it's tough to project accomplishments with rental assistance because there's no concrete amount of assistance. We're not limiting the amount of assistance. It's likely that they'll be able to assist many more households, but this is a very conservative projection because, again, it's families and individuals. So if, for example, if they were to get 30 families, five, you know, five-person families, it would cost a lot more than if they were to get 30 individuals. So this is just a very conservative estimate. They're likely going to be able to assist many more people, but this is more of a minimum.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'm sure you'll do some kind of an after-action report, but I'd really like to understand, you know, we know that as many as 50% of Costa Masons are in some kind of challenged housing situation right now, and not all of rental assistance wouldn't fix all of that by any means, but my sense certainly is that there's great demand for this. And so trying to understand, you know, what those numbers look like, how many people and how much and how they find out about the program, all of that, I think, will be really helpful in shaping some of our actions moving forward. So I would just ask that we find ways to make sure we're collecting that data. I didn't look through the subrecipient agreement to see if that's all in there, but certainly our relationship with Mercy House, I'm hoping that's some of what comes out of this, is we can better shape our programs going forward, particularly with rental assistance. We've had a lot of conversations up here about what works and what doesn't, so I'd like us to be as informed as possible moving forward. This won't be the last time we do this.
Any other, sorry, any other questions from council? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, thank you. Very similar question to Mayor Protam, Mar. So, and for the same reason, we know so many of our residents are struggling from, you know, young people to our seniors on fixed incomes. I was curious if in the performance reports, you know, it's great to hear who we've helped, but I want to make sure that we're also collecting and retaining the data of like who's contacted the program and not, you know, filled out an application, like what is the sort of attrition through that process? One of the conversations I've had a lot, when I say the city has programs, right? Go on the website, look, you know, call, and people kind of become exasperated. They're just like, I've called this number and that number and this number and that number, and they're kind of giving up on reaching out on the resources, right? So I really appreciate the adjustments to the program. I think the strategy to do, you know, in-person applications is going to be great. I've got some ideas on locations and hosts for those in terms of people who have really good outreach into communities and can provide a trusted location. But I really want to make sure we're capturing the data on who's contacting and not getting through, so we see that those gaps as well. Is that feasible? Can we make sure that we're tracking that data?
Yes, that'll all be included in the various reports that they submit.
Okay, great. And then something just to think about, I don't think it affects this particular motion, but again, similar in the spirit of what Mayor Protam was describing, I'm really glad to see the city involved in the outreach on this too, right? Because I think Nate will become sort of the centerpiece for a lot of this, as we really try to develop, you know, programs and strategies at the city to support our residents struggling with housing. How can we be using the data from this program, other programs, even other outreach we're doing through our senior centers, maybe through our work with schools, maybe through our work with our recreation programs? How can we be, and I don't have an answer for this, I'm sort of planting a seed that I'm sure you're already thinking of, but how can we be sort of strategically pulling together the connections and information we need to develop broader strategies that are going to help that 50% of Costa Masons going forward? We've talked in the past about not really having a systematic way of understanding what the rents look like in the city. You know, we, I think, historically, city governments have focused more on our homeowners, right? And so we don't have a lot of regular kind of communication with our renter community. So I'm really interested in those broader strategies going forward and how we can leverage each of these, you know, smaller, very necessary programs to support that going forward. To make that a question, can you do that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, the $500,000 and the money that goes into the Mercy House, is it 100% of it go to rents for people, or is there some administrative portion?
Yeah, so there's administration of the program itself, and then there's the service component that goes along with providing rental assistance. It's not just straight cutting a check. They're doing, you know, income certifications, they're connecting people to resources. Again, it's much more than just cutting a check to the landlord and walking away. So there is some staff costs, there is some administration of the program, but the majority of it will go to rent, to the landlords.
So as a percentage of the $500,000, 10% administration, 5%, 2%?
I think the admin's at 10%, and then there's staff costs in addition to the, you know, staff costs to provide the services themselves, and then the rest is rental assistance. But I believe it's about 90% staff and rental assistance.
Do you get reports back on what that is, or how do you, how do you, how do you check that, or how do you?
that, or how do you look at that?
So every month, when they submit their invoices, they submit a performance report as well that has all of that information in it.
Okay. And then I, I think to the same question, Councilmember Reynolds was asking, how do you, who's, who's accessing these programs? How are they finding it?
So it's, you know, it's a general outreach and engagement. We have, of course, our outreach team. We have a team of seven people that are out doing amazing work in the field, connecting with families. We get phone calls and emails every day from community members that need assistance. We have a strong partnership with the Newport Mesa Unified School District where we can send out information via the school system as well. And then, of course, any other opportunities that we have with council ideas on places to go and people to speak to. I mean, our goal is to get the word out to as many people as possible.
Okay, so it's your outreach that they find, I, okay, and I'm not sure I really understand that, but, and, and is there, I know you, you, you laid out the new program. The old program, was it three months or six months, or how many months did you support? And what's, generally, what's the percentage you're, like on a $3,000 a month rent, are you paying 1,000, 500? What's the, give me some numbers on that.
So the old program would pay up to 100% of the rent. So the money was funneled out quicker, I believe. This has the, the resident with a little bit of skin in the game, they have their 30% portion, the city pays, or Mercy House through the city pays the 70%. And also what that does is, is it allows, it's not just paying someone's rent and then walking away, it's really training them on how to, again, there's, there's financial assistance, there's financial training, way to, you know, pay your bills better. It's, it's a, it's a holistic approach, it's not just the rent. What was the initial question that you had?
I'll, I'll switch to a different one. It was really kind of, I think, yeah, I think you answered it in a way. So the other program could pay 100% of your rent? And it was, that was based on the formula of what kind of formula?
Yeah, that's right. So there was a maximum amount of assistance with the initial program.
And that was how much?
$3,000, which is, is fine, I mean, everybody was grateful for that, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide enough assistance to give that, that really secure guarantee that you're going to have a roof over your head for multiple months to come. You know, the three months, again, is, is great, but not, it's not good for every family. Some families need more assistance, so this just gives more flexibility. And because it's tied to income, it's not paying 100% of the rent. If a family makes a little bit more, then they're able to assist an additional family because they were paying less for that family. So again, like I spoke about, the projections are likely going to be higher than what we have here.
And were, were you able to measure the outcome of those 200-plus people you helped with the initial $900,000?
There was no follow-up.
No follow-up. Had you considered in the new program something where it scales down the, the rental assistance over maybe six months or a year? Because I think you're on the right track of, of not just giving some money, and especially if you don't know the outcome, you don't know if you just deferred a bad event or you helped someone stabilize their situation.
Exactly, and so part of the eligibility process is determining which program's best for a household, but like you just said, sir, if there's a household that can't afford their rent and they have no income to sustain that, what good does it do to pay the rent? So they would then be directed to another resource potentially to assist with that issue. We're looking at families that are self-sustaining, that just ran into some, some hard times, that need a little bit of help to, to maintain their housing, and then with the services of Mercy House potentially increase income and become self-sustaining in that unit. Like you said, we're not just putting a Band-Aid on a chest wound.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Band-aid on a chest wound, okay. That's a, that's a, interesting.
Please.
Okay, so I got two questions. I'll ask them at the same time, they're distinct questions. Number one is, what's the rationale for saying that if the tenant receives money from our program, they can't receive money from any other program? As, it would seem to me like another way to look at it is, if a tenant receives money from another program, then, and we just fill the gap, then we'll be able to help more people. So that's the first question, what's the rationale for that requirement? The second question is, there's an affidavit that's required from landlords. Have we found that any landlords push back and are not willing to participate in this? You know, because maybe they'd prefer that the client doesn't get the money and they can evict the client and bring in somebody at a market rate? Or are landlords receptive to this program?
So generally landlords are very receptive. You know, there are times when there are some rental arrears or past due rent where the landlord is not willing to take payment of the arrears and then future rent. Maybe they're, they don't want to deal with it or whatever the reasoning is, but there have been instances like that where the landlord's not willing to accept the assistance from the provider. But generally landlords are very, very receptive to accepting funds for, you know, funds that are due for, for rent, is, is what we've found. So there hasn't been any issue with their, with that at all. As far as, the term to describe your first question is duplication of benefits. It's a federal term that became very popular during the pandemic when billions of dollars were being filtered out and people were receiving unemployment and then rental assistance and all these various forms of assistance. And what they found was that people were taking advantage of the system and, you know, service provider surfing and going around and, and taking benefits for the same thing that they had already received benefits for in the past. And so the federal government made it illegal to, to duplicate benefits, and all it essentially says is you can't receive this assistance for the same thing for the same period of time. So if it's November rent from the city of Costa Mesa, you can't receive that same rent from another program, from another similar program. Now, that's not to say that what, what you're saying can't happen, there can, there can surely be GAAP assistance there. It's for the same, the same assistance for the same amount of time. So if, if there's, if there's an additional need, then, then we can fill that. But if it's the same assistance for the same period of time, it's duplication of benefits and it's ineligible.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions, let's open it up to the public comment. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak to this item? I don't see anybody coming up to the podium or the lecterns. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, motion by Councilmember Chavez. What's your motion, sir?
Move to prove staff recommendation.
Okay, and seems like Councilmember Harland is willing to second that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes. First of all, thank you so much to Nate and the whole city team for, for doing this. We've heard time and time again the importance of providing these type of resources to our residents, especially those in District Four who, majority are renters. And let's not forget that the majority of the city of Costa Mesa is in fact renters. That's me, I'll keep repeating any chance I get. I just want to reiterate the point that was made by Protem Mar and by my member Reynolds. It really is important for us to start digging deeper when it comes to the rent situation in Costa Mesa. We should have data on the average rent cost. I assure you, it'll surprise you. We should be kind of tracking to see what's the best way to get out information. Because I know for a fact this is very helpful, but it would not, it will not be helpful enough. We will still miss people, people will still need more help, and I think any chance we can do systematically create more benefit to our residents at rent, the better. I think this is a good first step. I'm very happy with Mercy House doing this RFP. They've done a great job in the past, and overall, I'm very pleased. But again, always learn to improve. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harland, do you wish to say anything on behalf of the second?
No, Councilmember Chavez covered everything. So thank you, Nate and Lori, appreciate all of your, your work. I guess I will add the one thing, which is, you know, I, I hope we get to a point where we don't have to make these kinds of decisions. I know this will be helpful and valuable, but again, it just underscores the importance of we need to have more housing in the city. Plain and simple. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, any of the other council members wish to say anything regarding the motion? Mayor Protem?
Couldn't agree more. This is just one more, one more reason why housing needs to be our focus, needs to remain our focus, and clearly we've got, I, I am eager to get a lot, a lot of this data because I think even finding out that the 50% of incomes, 50% of households are affected by some kind of housing crisis was a, a big deal to this council when we received that information. So to the extent we can have all the information to back up what I think anecdotally, we all know that housing remains a crisis in the city, is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, that's it, I guess. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, excellent. So now we're moving on to new business item number two. Looks like you're, we'll read the title, looks like you're still up.
Yes.
Okay.
This is commitment of 975,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds to Families Forward for development of the Bungalows Affordable Housing Project located at 2039 Pomona Avenue, and staff presentation by Mr. Robbins.
Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk. So speaking of housing, we have a, an amazing housing project before you guys tonight. It's called the Bungalows. It's a Families Forward project, and I'm really excited about it. So some background, Families Forward is a local nonprofit service provider established in 1984, so they've been around for a really long time. I actually didn't know this, and I'm, I'm sure most of you do. Families Forward actually opened an eight-unit affordable housing project on 21st Street in Costa Mesa in December of 2019. And then Families Forward later acquired the property in question at 2039 Pomona Ave in March of 2021 for $2.4 million, and this is important in private donor funds. So just the amazing support that an organization like Families Forward gets to be able to accrue $2.4 million and then spend it on the acquisition of a building is awesome, and we're just, we're happy to be a partner of them and with them. And then, of course, the item tonight, it's Families Forward submitted a request to the city for funding of the Bungalows this month, in November of 2022. So some project highlights. It's, it's an eight-unit permanent affordable housing project that will house up to 36 people, which is very important. It's only eight units, we've, we've heard other projects with many more units, but because this is a project designed for families with larger-than-studio and one-bedroom units, it, it can house more people. So again, eight units but up to 36 people, four one-bedroom, three two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom unit in there. Six of the units are going to be rehabilitated, and there's actually be, going to be two brand-new construction of ADUs, which, as we all know, new construction is RENA-eligible, so it'll help us get to our over 11,000 housing unit mark for RENA. The project will serve households with children earning at or below 50% AMI, which we just heard is not a lot of money annually. All the units will have a Costa Mesa live-work-school preference. You'll hear me talk about this a lot, it's, it's you either live in Costa Mesa currently, you either currently work in Costa Mesa, or you have kids that go to school in Costa Mesa, and if you don't have that, not to say that you can't live here, but a preference will be given to Costa Mesa residents that have these ties to the city, to, to be able to live in this project. The units will be affordable for a minimum of 20 years, so long-term affordability, and then, of course, the project achieves the council goal to diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect the community needs. It is a great community need to have affordable housing for families with children. So more than, again, studio and one-bedroom apartments, we need two- and three-bedroom apartments for our families. Some of the amenities for the project, of course, Families Forward is an amazing service provider, so they'll have case managers that will be working with all the tenant families. They'll have wraparound services, which is essentially linking families to other services that they either provide, that Families Forward provides themselves, or third-party services that they can, that they can get somewhere else. They'll have access to the Families Forward food pantry, so no family living there will ever go hungry. They'll have a community room for community events, open space, and onsite laundry facility. And I'm sure you've noticed, but the, the background is renderings from the project, so it's, it's going to be a really, really beautiful project. So usually the biggest funding, or the biggest question is funding. It's, it's $4.6 million total to develop this project. Broke it up into sources and uses. Sources is where the money's coming from and uses where it's going. Sources, $2.7 million of the total development cost is donations. So again, a ton of community support for Families Forward, we're lucky to have them here in the city. Private loan of just under a million, and then the ARPA grant from the city of 975,000 should the council choose to approve this item. And then the uses, the acquisition of the site was $2.6 million, 1.8 million for construction to rehab and, and new construct the two ADU, ADU units, and then, of course, fees and permits totaling the $4.6 million total development cost. So the recommendation of staff is that council would approve the appropriation and allocation of $975,000 in ARPA funds or any other viable source of funds to Families Forward for the development of the Bungalows project, an affordable housing project that will serve an estimated 36 individuals, eight families, contingent upon the successful completion of a financial feasibility analysis by the city's third-party underwriting consultant, Kaiser Marsen Associates. And just a footnote, they're, they're in the process of their analysis, they, they didn't complete it in time. So of course, your, your decision here tonight would be contingent upon that, it would, it would have to pass underwriting. And then number two, to authorize the city manager or their designated, execute the funding agreement and all associated documents as needed to bring the project to fruition. We have in the crowd tonight Executive Director of Families Forward, Madeline Hearnacy, and then my good friend and project manager, Nishtha Mohendra, both from Families Forward to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions of either our staff or Families Forward staff? Mayor Protem Mar?
So the recommendation is to approve the appropriation and allocation of 975 in ARPA money or any other viable source of funds? That, that seems a little bit open-ended. Did you have something specific in mind?
I think, I think ARPA would be the, the first, the first target, just because it's so flexible and for what the project is, but, you know, anytime there's other viable sources of funds that are specifically for housing that could be contemplated for a project like this, we like to keep it flexible because you, you choose one source and sometimes you can pay yourself into a corner, and with housing, it changes so much, it's good to have flexibility. We're trying to bake in some flexibility here is all.
I'm sorry.
Just, I mean, I, I'm assuming we're, we're not talking about general funds or any other...
No, not general fund sources, so it's ARPA. We have, of course, the Low-Moderity Income Housing Fund as well as an option, and so that's, what you have before you tonight is the plan, but again, just to make sure that we have different options also eventually when the auditors come and visit, in case they have any issues or, or anything like that that can come up, because they will be auditing all of our federal funds at the same time. It gives us a flexibility to be able to do a journal voucher or something like that that would satisfy them while at the same time meeting the project needs and make sure that the funding would have already been provided but that we can actually make those kinds of changes. And so it's just to give that kind of flexibility because there's so many, we're lucky that we have so many different funding sources at play that can help with the housing, any of these housing projects, actually.
So if we were to modify that sentence to say any other viable source of grant or grant funds or housing funds?
Oh, yeah, that's good. Yeah, just to make sure it's painfully clear and, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other, oh, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, so two questions. One, I'm, I'm curious about the, how, well, are there opportunities to increase the number of units on this site? This is probably an applicant question, or increase the number of, like, multi-bedroom units? One of the things that's really neat about this site is its proximity to the elementary school, of course, right? But, uh, one-bedroom units, I think, are, you know, more challenging for families. So I'm, I'm interested if that's an opportunity, I'd certainly support that. And then also, 20 years, it looks like the period of, whatever we call it, affordability is, is only 20 years? So I'm curious what we would expect to happen at the end of that 20-year period? Is it standard practice for this kind of project to then extend the affordability requirements or with, with these in 20 years, which is, you know, just one generation growing up, right? In 20 years, would these become market-rate units? So two questions for either you or the applicant. Thank you.
I think the applicant would like to answer the question.
I would like to. Good evening. Thank you so much for the question. Yes, we would have loved to do, to do more units, it's a cost analysis. Limitations with the ADU and the height of the ADU, some of those challenges made it hard to do two bedrooms for both of them, but it's definitely something we're continuing to look at. So to answer your question, we would have loved to do more units, it just wasn't feasible with the space. If you're familiar with the lot, it's very small, narrow, but the proximity to Pomona Elementary was just such a great opportunity. And then to answer your other question, from, from my perspective, from Families Forward's perspective, the, the 21st Street project... And then, to answer your other question, from, from my perspective, from Families Forward's perspective, the, the Twenty First Street project has no city funding and no regulatory agreement attached to it. That is all based off of, we're mission-based. Our work is to ensure that we can remain affordable, help as many families as possible, and more importantly, create flow through those programs, which is where the case management services are critical. So we're committed. We're in this. The Twenty First Street project is a prime example. So no, we would not revert to market rate at year twenty-one, but this gives us the opportunity to get property tax exemptions and to make that partnership really solid. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, if I can just follow up, is it, is it Family Forward, Families Forward practice that you're not operating market-rate units? That, that all of the units you are operating are meeting an affordability requirement?
Yes. I mean, our, our commitment is to ensuring that every family has a home and the opportunity to thrive, and that's through affordable housing.
Okay, great. And if I could follow up on the, I've just, I'm not sure where you are in the sort of site development, but are, are there opportunities, are you too far down the line to, you know, if we were to look at some of the constraints that might be, you know, our own ADU rules, for example, is, is there an opportunity to try to, you know, squeeze out some extra bedrooms or squeeze out an extra unit?
Yeah, unfortunately, we are too far down the process. I mean, our goal is to have the units home for the holidays, to ensure that we have heads-on-beds right around the corner here.
Okay.
So it's definitely something, you know, we've worked very closely with the city staff. They've been so gracious to work with us, and, you know, the feedback to make sure if we can get an ADU, how do we get the most space out of it when we're trying to serve families? You know, we're, we're definitely open to maybe future opportunities, but for this project, it's too far.
Okay, okay. Yep, thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Councilmember Harper.
I probably had questions for the applicant. Thank you. I just, the owner of the, the property ends up being Family Forward?
Yeah, so Families Forward purchased the, the property through the private donations that Nate had mentioned.
I'm looking at your financials, and you've got twenty-seven million in assets. You, how many properties do you own?
We own fifty-seven units of affordable housing throughout Orange County.
Throughout Orange County?
Yes.
How long you been doing this?
How, we've been since nineteen eighty-four, so almost forty years.
Wow.
Yeah. It's a drop in the bucket, though. We know we need so much more. So our fifty-seven, we're proud, but we know there needs to be ten million times that.
And when we were talking about a feasibility study, are, are you talking about rent versus expenses? What is, what do you mean by feasibility study?
We had provided a pro forma to, to Nate and the team, and then also just an analysis of our sources and use fund to ensure that every dollar that came in is going out as we've budgeted and determined, so they're reviewing that, as far as I understand.
And then, I'm, I'm assuming you sometimes take on debt for projects and make sure that?
Yeah, this project does have a, a nine hundred thousand dollar loan, so we do have debt on this project.
Okay, okay. And you are the, are you the president?
I'm sorry, I forgot. I just realized. I'm Madeline Hearnese. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of, of Families Forward.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any questions, so let's say, open it up to public comment. Oh, you want to come back up and?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to kind of wrap up a little bow here, and, and of course, just thank you all for your time this evening and the opportunity to continue to invest in the city. This project, we like to refer to it as NOA, so it's Naturally Occurring Affordable Housing. In a community where there's overcrowding or maybe some other parking and other challenges, we have this naturally occurring affordable housing, and our goal is to preserve that. Not to come in and wipe that clean and to up the rents, but preserve that and to reinvest in the community. So our proximity to the elementary school, the relationships that we can build, again, we want to help support Costa Mesa residents where they are in keeping them housed, but of course, as I mentioned earlier, ensuring that we provide really strong economic mobility resources to get them to graduate on. We cannot build and fill. We don't have enough resources. So with your support, this will just make the project feasible. And part of the challenges with this project, as many of you might have experienced in your own homes, is the cost, the kind of staggering increase in inflation, the labor supply shortages, the gas issues, and we saw our, our finance budget go up and up and up. So this will really be a critical missing piece, and we just thank you in advance for your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Humphrey.
Good evening again, Council. Jim Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I agree with staff's recommendation in this project, as well as number three to follow this one. Both of them are time-tested projects that have shown to work in the past. And as you work to accomplish your RENA goals and what have you, this is a good step in both of these in that direction. As Eskimos have said in the past, the way you eat whale is one bite at a time, and these are a couple of bites, and they're probably a couple of good bites. So I do agree with, I, I agree with both two and three, item two and item three, staff. And I also, by the way, agreed on one for staff's recommendation also. So thank you all very much in this process.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, no, nobody else come into the mic? Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mar.
Oh, you guys. Close, close public comment. See, this is like Jeopardy. You're not supposed to be able to ring in until I close public comment.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I had my, I had my hand right over that.
It should have been us.
Okay, so I know, I know. It's all right. It's all good.
You can have it, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll grant you.
No, 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 no. It's all good. It's all good. It doesn't make any difference. So, Mayor Protem Mar is making the motion. What's your motion?
I'll move to approve the staff recommendation with the provision that the alternative to ARPA funding is housing funds or grant funds received by the city.
Second.
Okay, you wish to speak to the motion.
No, it's a fantastic project. Looking forward to visiting the site, and I like the heads-on-beds as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Go ahead. Councilmember, support your second.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I will speak for the motion. I am very happy that this project is happening in my district, where I come from, street from Pomona School. This site has been a location that has, for as long as time, needed some, some tender loving care. That alleyway next to Pomona School has often had trash, and now knowing that there's going to be families there who can have their kids playing, not only deter the trash from accumulating, but also give opportunities for folks to really thrive in Costa Mesa. I've always said that, was that Costa Mesa really is the heart of the city? We love everyone. We accept everyone, and I can't wait for these new families to join us. And before the mayor speaks, I do want to just point out his hard work also in this. He has been my, my ally through and through in supporting this project. In fact, when I had COVID, he was the one leading the charge, make sure, on the agenda. So, Mayor, I appreciate you for all you did for this project and for residents in, in my district, so thank you.
That's so nice. That's why, see, that's why you didn't, you weren't opposed in the election. Comments like that. So anyhow, this is a great project. Families Forward is a great organization. I just, I'll never forget when I first met with Madeline, I think it was back in twenty seventeen, and I just so hoped, they didn't, weren't doing anything in Costa Mesa, I so hoped that they would move to Costa Mesa and help our community, and now they've got two housing projects that are moving forward, and I hope that they're done by the holidays, and I hope that Santa Claus can come to see those kids. Okay? Ho, ho, ho. Call for the question.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I wanted, I just wanted to add two things. Of course, agree with the project, like the heads-on-beds by Christmas. I wanted to, to make a comment. I'm looking at a, sort of an aerial shot of this and just thinking of, as we're continually thinking of ways to sort of add units to the cities to provide for more housing opportunities. I'm, I'm looking at the site and I see what, you know, what our codes have, have created, right? We've got a row of homes with a, a driveway, right, a really long driveway, so lots of space reserved for cars. But right on the other side of that row of homes, there's a, there's a street, right, and there's just more, in, in, in half of my screenshot here, it's, it's space that's reserved for driving, not even parking, but driving, right, and so just another reminder of, of, that we really need to look at our codes so that we're using space better, so that we have more space where we can house the residents of our city. The other thing that came to mind is, you know, we're, we're providing these funds that we received. I think these are funds related to COVID relief, and, you know, these are funds that are going to a project that'll be owned by Families, Families Forward, but I, I think it would be nice to sort of capture some of the, the history of these relationships and contributions and decisions we're making, and so some kind of, I, I, I'm also thinking of, as I, there's a few neighborhoods in my city that have sort of historic homes that are all electric homes, and they have this really nice, like, medallion. I had a, a bright conversation with someone who was talking about the, the historic business plaques on the street, and so I think it'd be great to include some kind of plaque, right, that this project was, you know, supported by ARPA funds from the city of Costa Mesa. So something like that, if we could incorporate, I think would be really nice to memorialize. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Ho, ho, ho. Call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thanks. All right, moving on to new business item number three.
Prove the commitment of eight hundred and fifty thousand of low-moderate income housing asset funds to Costa Mesa Mercy House, C-H-D-O-L-L-C, for the conversion of the Motel Six into a Home Key project located at two two seven four Newport Boulevard in Costa Mesa. Mr. Robbins, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Some more housing for you, Council. This is the Motel Six project, which we have spoken about several times before. The project is nearing closing, and the developer received a quote that was a little bit higher, so they, they need a little bit more money. So I'll give you some, some background. I think most of us know a lot of this, so I'll breeze through it, but in November, council approved three point five million in ARPA for Home Key projects, all of which are going to this Motel Six project. The Motel Six project was awarded ten point six seven five million dollars from the state of California's Home Key program in April of twenty twenty-two. City council approved an additional award of one point five million in home funds for Motel Six. And then, as I just said, in October, late October, developer received an updated construction quote that was plus two million dollars due to inflation and supply chain costs. So there really is no other reason than literally inflation and supply chain is the reason why they needed more money to bring this project to fruition. Just a reminder of some of the project highlights. It's, it is permanent affordable housing. There is a permanent supportive housing component. So it's eighty-eight total units. Thirty units will go to veterans, ten units go to individuals experiencing homelessness. Forty-seven of the units are going to be for Costa Mesa senior citizens, which is an amazing part of this project, and then, of course, an unrestricted manager's unit for onsite property management. Some of the amenities, community garden, dog park, community room, demonstration kitchen, fitness room, TV lounge, computer lab. And if you look off to the right of the screen, there's four logos there. The, the project's actually going to have onsite services from all four of these organizations. So they'll be onsite, they'll literally have their own office, the VA will have offices there to support the veterans. Mercy House will have offices there as the overall service provider for the entire project. The county healthcare agency will have an office, and then, of course, FBI property manager will have an office as well. In the bottom-left corner of your screen, just like the last project, this does meet the council goal to, to diversify, stabilize, and increase housing to reflect community needs, and all eighty-seven units of the Motel Six project will count toward the city's RENA allocation of over eleven thousand new housing units. So it's a really, really good project. Just a brief summary of where we're at with the local funding. Of course, there's more funding in this project, but this is what's coming from the city of Costa Mesa and the county of Orange. The city's current obligation to the project is five million dollars, and the county's current obligation is four point five million dollars, for a total of nine point five million. The, the two million dollar increase is being split between the city and the county, so the county is not shouldering the brunt of this increase. It's being split right down the middle, fifty-fifty, between us and the county, and you can see what the revised amounts would be should council choose to approve this item tonight, at least on our part. The county's going to the Board of Supervisors on December sixth or eighth. I don't remember exactly which one, and if that goes through, then the, the local funding will be eleven point two million. The Low-Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, which is the source that we are requesting that these funds come from, the balance as of twelve thirty-one twenty-one was three point seven million dollars plus. And just for, for point of reference, low-mod housing funds can only be used to develop affordable housing. There is no other use for the twenty percent set aside low-mod income housing asset funds. So staff recommends that the council would approve an appropriation and allocation of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in low-moder, low-moderate income housing asset funds to CM Mercy House Chodo LLC for conversion of the Motel Six housing project, and that you would authorize the city manager or their designated execute the funding agreement and all associated documents as needed to bring the project to fruition. And we have with us tonight Kyle Payne is the President of Community Development Partners, and as we spoke about earlier, the main service provider, of course, Chief Executive Officer Larry Haynes is here for Mercy House to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Kyle Payne is also a neighbor.
That's right.
It's all in the family. Okay, any questions of either staff or Mr. Payne? Okay. I, I, I don't see anybody. I just have, one thing is, when you have your matrix where you say this is the city's contribution, I think it's always important, because there was a lot of misunderstanding about what money was, is going into this project. I think it's important for us to emphasize that this, these are federal funds that are being allocated, federal funds available to the city, they're being allocated to this project, and in the case of the low-mod funds, restricted funds that can't be used for anything other than a project like this. There's a lot of talk in the last couple of months about this project, insinuating that, you know, the money's being paid out of the general fund or the reserves or something of that nature, so we have to be crystal clear when we describe this to the public.
Sorry, I do have a question.
Yes.
The last time you were here, or maybe it wasn't you, we, this, this subject came up, that they said the project cost was over forty million. Is this extra two million because somebody didn't fund somewhere else, or did the project costs go up? And no one seemed clear on what the real cost was. They seemed really, they didn't know yet. Is that, I hope that's a fair characterization.
Yeah, so the, the overall cost of the project is, is close to fifty million dollars. It's upwards of, in the high forties for the overall project cost, but as we just learned over a period of just a couple of months, costs can go up by millions of dollars, so it's really hard to nail that down until closing. The only reason for this ask right now is inflation and supply chain cost issues. There, there is no, no other funding that didn't come through. This is purely an increased construction quote from the general contractor. That's all this is.
Got it. So we're, we don't really know. We know roughly high forties. That's an estimate, I guess. Is that a hard number? Is that a good number?
I could, I could get you the exact number. It's probably, I think it's around forty-eight million dollars for the, for the total project. But I think it's important to mention that these, these projects are self-sustaining, so yeah, it's forty-eight million dollars now, but for fifty-five years, another, not another dollar has to go into this project to offer eighty-seven units of affordable housing for, again, fifty-five years, so it's a lot upfront, but we don't, we don't just get units that are, you know, then gone.
This is owned by the Home Key, some agency, right? It's a government agency, is that correct? Who owns the deed for this project?
So the county's going to own the project. The county is, is the one that received the Home Key funds, which is part of the acquisition portion of that. So the county will own it, and then they'll ground lease to, to Mercy House, who will, who, well, the Mercy House Chodo LLC that's going to take ownership of the property through a ground lease.
Explain that to me. What's that mean?
So, an LLC was formed between Community Development Partners and Mercy House, called Costa Mesa Mercy House Chodo LLC. So they are co, co-owners, co-developers, co-managing partners, and affiliates of the LLC. The, the property's being acquired by the county, and then through a ground lease, the, the property's being conveyed to the LLC.
I see. So they're leasing it to an operating entity, essentially, right?
Right, and, and Kyle can definitely provide more detailed information on that aspect of the project.
Yeah. And I think the last time you were here, I asked, what are the operating costs and what are the revenues and what are the expenses, and I don't think you had the numbers yet, right? You were still trying to put all this together. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Need to say?
Yeah, so it's Kyle Payne, President, Community Development Partners, I, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yeah, we have a full pro forma on the project. We've been sharing with the city and the county and the state for the last, I don't know, four or five months that we've been working on it. So we have all those numbers. Happy to share those with you. I don't have them on me today in terms of the operating income and revenue expenses, but all been accounted for, underwritten. The project does sustain itself from the income and covers its operating expenses and enough to pay the, the debt that we will, the hard debt will eventually put on the project. The project is a two-phase project, so this is where some of the confusion comes in. So it is, the first phase of the project is getting the Home Key portion done, which is the forty-one units. So forty units of Home Key. So forty units of home key plus one manager unit. That's the first phase of the project. That's the one we have the hard quote on. It had gone up by two million. Our staff worked hard to try to get that number down. So you'll see the increase in cost as one point seven million. That's the funds we got. We worked hard to get that cost as low as we could. So we shaved off the other, you know, three hundred or so thousand dollars, but still left with this gap. And so that's why we're requesting the eight hundred fifty thousand from the city here today and eight hundred fifty thousand from the county, which will go to the Board of Supervisors on the sixth of December. So that's the first phase. So that's the one cost we have to get done. The second phase of the project will include the rehab of the remainder of the units, which, you know, total of eighty-eight units in the project. And that'll be upwards of forty-plus million dollars. And that will include funding from the state in forms of four percent tax credits and taxes of bond financing, as well as hard debt. So there are two phases of the project, and that's where it is a little confusing as to.
It's not, well, it's not, I think it's not confusing. I actually understand everything you're saying, just we've never been given the data. And I understand these are American Rescue Funds, and I understand they're government dollars from the federal government. And Mayor Stevens, I understand that, but I also understand that we do have some responsibility to understand what we're contributing to and how it works. That's all I'm trying, that's all I'm asking about, frankly.
Sure, yeah.
And I don't have the data information.
Yeah, we have a whole entire pro forma we've used to apply for all the funding and that we've been working through, adding to it as these costs have increased.
And you've shared that with the city staff.
Yes.
You guys have seen it. So you've analyzed it.
Yes, and I've personally reviewed it, too.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Reynolds.
Sorry, one other question. I had remembered that in our previous allocation, one point five million was actually a loan. And as I look back at the staff report, I'm noticing that we're saying that this eight hundred and fifty thousand that we're asking for today is also a loan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how does that come back?
So it's still a residual receipts loan. So the positive cash flow of the project will be distributed amongst all the people that are owed money. And so as the project makes money through rent, whenever there's excess cash, the loans will be repaid that way. Usually, these types of loans don't get repaid for a really long time, but as the money comes back in, it can then be reused to fund other projects.
For another similar project in the future.
Okay. I missed that, and I just wanted to highlight that and make sure that wasn't an error. So that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, let's open up the public comment. Okay, nobody from the chambers? Anybody on Zoom? Closed public comment. Okay, let's call for the question. Sorry, make a motion first. That's right. We're doing that this time? We're making the motion before we call for the question? Okay. Well, just on this item, we'll do it like that. Councilmember Harland, it's your turn.
Oh, thank you. I'm happy to support the motion recommending staff's approval. I'm, you know, very grateful for staff's work on this. It's good that we are, not just good that we're getting housing, it's vital. I can't stress that enough. And as Councilmember Reynolds just pointed out, we're tonight approving a loan, which means that we may be seeing that money come back so we can leverage that again. I think this is being fiscally responsible. And quite honestly, this is what it takes to get housing built in Southern California and Costa Mesa in particular. So I'm pleased to be moving forward on that.
Mayor Protem, do you have anything to say on behalf of the second?
Yeah, there were a lot of lies told during the election about this project. I just feel like I have to say that out loud, right? This project has been lied about like crazy, how much it costs, how much the city's investing, what it actually means, where that money is coming from, who it's going to, whether or not it's a homeless shelter. It was all garbage. There was so much, so much garbage about this project. So I'm really proud to second this. It is a great project. If anyone has any questions about the financials, we can dig into that. Mr. Payne is available to answer lots and lots of detailed questions. It is housing for people who need it, and I am proud to support it. Thank you.
Okay. Then, in that case, let's call for the question.
Motion carries six one. Councilmember Harper voting no.
All right. Moving on to our last two items, our penultimate item, new business item number four. Please read the title.
Thank you. This is adoption of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five memorandum of understanding between the city of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa City Employees Association and the adoption of accompanying salary resolutions for CMCEA and the confidential unit. Presentation tonight is by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager. And now is the time to call for any ex parte communications, please.
Yes, anybody?
I have met representative of OCA and CMCA.
Same.
I did as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I met with the lead for the CMCEA.
Okay. Well, I mean, I haven't met with anybody since the last time I disclosed it, but before we talked about it last time, I think I talked to Robert Gonzalez. Anyway. Anybody else? All right.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Tonight, we bring forth the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Costa Mesa City Employees, also known as CMCEA. As one of our current goals, part of our three-year strategic plan is to recruit and retain high-quality staff. This memorandum of understanding presented for council approval tonight will make great strides in being able to recruit and retain high-quality staff and make the city of Costa Mesa a more competitive employer in today's market. Just a little bit of background on the CMCEA negotiations. In March two thousand twenty, the COVID outbreak emergency declaration was issued. In June of two thousand twenty, side letter of agreement with CMCA was approved with the following key provisions: a one-hundred-and-four-hour furlough equivalent to a five percent compensation reduction in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two-one, a two-year contract extension to June two thousand twenty-two, elimination of the tier-two vacation accrual, a two percent salary increase effective June two thousand twenty-two, elimination of tier-two salary ranges, an increase to the flexible benefit contribution by one hundred dollars per month in June of two thousand twenty-two, and a provision for a one-time payment equivalent to reductions taken should the city receive stimulus funds in excess of forty-point-five million. In April two thousand twenty-one, an amendment to the side letter of agreement with CMCA was approved to eliminate furloughs and reimburse salary cuts already incurred. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget includes five hundred fifty FTEs. That includes two hundred sixty-one CMCA employees. CMCA salary and benefit provisions also apply to our non-represented confidential employee unit, which includes twenty-two FTEs. The previous MOU covered years two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two and expired on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The key provisions of this negotiated CMCA include: a term of the MOU, which is July one, two thousand two, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, is a three-year term; salary and wage increases of two percent effective January two thousand twenty-three; three percent increase effective July two thousand twenty-three; a three percent increase effective July two thousand twenty-four; a three percent reduction in retirement contributions effective July two thousand twenty-three, resulting in a total nine percent employee contribution; a fifty-dollar-per-month increase effective January two thousand twenty-three, January two thousand twenty-four, and January two thousand twenty-five, with the maximum cash out remaining at fifteen hundred per month; an annual match up to half a percent of base salary effective January two thousand twenty-three; for standby pay, an increase of half hour per weekday and one point two-five hours per weekend day and holidays; increase to the maximum accrual for vacation leave to three hundred eighty hours. Sick leave would now convert from an annual accrual to a bi-weekly accrual, with an increase for the maximum accrual to four hundred eighty hours. New employees will be provided with ninety-six hours of sick leave in their bank upon hire. For shift assignment pay, we will now allow employees regularly assigned to day shift to receive shift assignment pay when working overtime in an AM or PM shift. Employees are also to receive their merit increase no later than sixty days from their anniversary date. These negotiated provisions are in line with other local agencies who are providing a one-to-eleven percent across-the-board salary increases, retirement contributions within the range of eight percent to thirteen percent for other agencies, and about fourteen fifty to nineteen sixty per month in health benefit contributions. Just a quick overview on the fiscal. Our current inflation rate is at eight percent. Consumer Price Index is also at eight percent. Fiscal impact analysis was prepared pursuant to the city council policy three hundred-eight transparency and labor negotiations. The increase for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three is estimated at five hundred seventy thousand, which will take effect in January two thousand twenty-three. And the estimated annual fiscal impact to the city's future budget is one point five million, accumulating to approximately three point six million annually. Our recommendations tonight are to approve and adopt the memorandum of understanding between the city and CMCA, adopt the resolutions revising pay range for CMCA and the confidential unit, approve the fiscal impact analysis, and authorize the city manager and the city's negotiation team to execute the MOU documents and appropriate into the respective departmental budgets. And I'm available to answer any questions on this item.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Lee? I don't see anybody lit up. Let's open it up to public comment. Nobody coming up on Zoom? Closed public comment. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Councilmember Chavez, seconded by Mayor Protem Mar. Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor to discuss your motion.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. I want to approve staff recommendation.
Anything further, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Mar?
Second.
Just a second? Okay. Any other council members wish to speak on this item? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, excellent. The last one, the ultimo. El ultimo. New business item number five. Please read the title.
This is adoption of the side letter of agreement between the city of Costa Mesa and the Costa Mesa Police Association and the adoption of accompanying salary resolution for CMPA. Staff presentation by Ms. Lee, Human Resources Manager. And now is the call for any ex parte communications, please.
Anybody with the police association? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think I already reported it, but yes, I've had interaction.
I've met with the president of the CMPOA.
I as well spoke with Jared Cortez of the CMPA.
Thank you.
I didn't really speak with him about anything about this. Okay. So we did that. Ms. Lee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Tonight, we also bring forth the side letter of agreement between the city and the Costa Mesa Police Association, also known as CMPA. Again, one of our goals as part of our three-year strategic plan is to recruit and retain high-quality staff. The side letter of agreement presented for council approval tonight will make great strides in being able to recruit and retain police officers and make the city of Costa Mesa more competitive in today's market. This item also supports the city council goal to strengthen public safety and improve the quality of life. A little bit of background on CMPA negotiations again. In March two thousand twenty, we, COVID-nineteen outbreak emergency declaration was issued. June of two thousand twenty, a side letter of agreement with CMPA was approved with the following key provisions: a one-hundred-and-four-hour furlough, five percent compensation reduction in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two-one, a four-year contract extension to June two thousand twenty-four, no base salary increase in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to twenty-two, a one percent in base salary and a one percent RHS contribution in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, a two percent increase in base salary from fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, elimination of a tier-two vacation accrual plan, contract reopeners in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, and fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, and a provision for a one-time payment equivalent to reductions taken should the city receive stimulus funds in excess of forty-point-five million. In April of two thousand twenty-one, an amendment to the side letter of agreement with CMCA was approved to eliminate furloughs and reimburse salary cuts already incurred. The fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget includes five hundred fifty full-time equivalents, including a hundred thirty-two CMPA employees. The previous MOU and side letter is covered years two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four and will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. The key provisions of the negotiated CMP side letter include: extension of the MOU for one year to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five; salary increases of two percent effective January two thousand twenty-three; an additional three percent increase effective July twenty-three, which is above the two percent base salary increase negotiated in June two thousand twenty; and a four-point-two-five increase effective July two thousand twenty-four; a one-point-two-five percent reduction in retirement contributions effective July two thousand twenty-three, resulting in a twelve-point-seven-five percent total employee contribution; a recruitment and retention pay incentive, which allows for a ten percent incentive for twenty-five years of sworn service effective January two thousand twenty-three; seven percent incentive for twenty years of sworn service; and a five percent incentive for fifteen years of sworn service effective in July two thousand twenty-four; and then a two-point-five percent incentive for ten years of sworn service effective January two thousand twenty-five; and a maximum of ten years of sworn service from other agencies will be considered. Also, a deferred compensation contribution of half a percent effective July two thousand twenty-four; and a net five percent special assignment pay for employees assigned to traffic, detectives, gangs, school resource, training recruitment in South Coast Plaza, community policing, and professional standards and training units. This net five percent reflects a net impact of a seven-point-five percent specialty pay with the simultaneous removal of the two-point-five percent uniform pay for those in patrol. Again, these negotiated provisions are in line with other local agencies, providing one-to-eleven percent and across-the-board salary increases, eleven-to-eighteen percent employer retirement contributions, and a three percent to seven-point-five percent in assignment pays for other agencies, and two-point-five percent to fifteen percent longevity pay. For the fiscal, a brief fiscal review for CMPA, the current inflation rate is at eight percent, along with the Consumer Price Index also at eight percent. Fiscal impact analysis was prepared pursuant to the city council policy three hundred-eight transparency and labor negotiations. Increase for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated at six hundred twenty thousand and will take effect in January twenty-three. Estimated annual impact to the city's future budget is one point nine million, accumulating to approximately four-point-one million annually. Staff recommendations for council today are to approve and adopt the side letter of agreement between the city and CMPA, to adopt the resolution revising the pay ranges for CMPA, approve the fiscal impact analysis, and authorize the city manager and the city's negotiation team to execute the side letter of agreement documents and appropriate into the respective departmental budgets. And I'm available for any questions on this item.
Counsel, do you have any questions of Ms. Lee? I don't see any. Okay. Then we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody in the chambers wish to comment on this? No? Anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have nobody on Zoom.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Looks like we have, Councilmember Gamaros was the fastest on the draw, and then we've got seconded by Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Gamaros, what is your motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Chavez, you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Gamaros, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, briefly, I just want to say that we spent a lot of time on both agreements, and it was really nice to know that we could amicably come to agreeable numbers on this and make sure that we're taking care of not only our emergency services, but also our utility service people as well. It's important that we take care of our employees moving forward and make sure that we have a good succession plan and retention plan for everyone involved. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Second?
Spoken very well.
Yeah. No, I think it's good, too, and I think that, of course, both, I agree with what Councilmember Gamaros said about both contracts. This police contract is very important, particularly the recruiting and retention pay of more senior sworn officers, and I really appreciate the input of the police chief and the plans he has to retain our most experienced officers and build a deep bench in the police department. Our police department has a very bright future. They're doing terrific work. Our police department is, has a very bright future, they're doing terrific work, and this contract reflects, in a very tangible way, our city council's commitment with the police department, our appreciation of what our sworn officers do. Let's call for the question.
Mayor, may I make just a quick comment?
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to thank both associations, and also our staff that worked so tirelessly on this whole effort, and so, Casama, I can't see you because my monitor is blocking, but thank you so much for your perseverance, and all of the hours that you put into this, along with Carol for doing all the financing, Alma was at the table as well, and of course, our negotiator, Peter Brown on the CMCEA side, and of course, the chief, and, but, real thank you to the boards of both associations and the presidents, specifically Robert Gonzalez, and also Jared Cortez and those teams, because they really work hard to bring this, everybody did to bring this to you tonight.
Excellent, I concur, let's call for the question.
My screen froze, but I'm a verbal yes.
Okay, but the motion carries 7-0.
Excellent, can you believe it, 10:31, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for all your hard work, staff and council, we are adjourned.
Wow.
Ours are still open.